The Enfield Transition Zone, which is the maximum of five lots deep, despite the fact that there are no parks, restaurants, grocery stores, or schools within a mile, and one single bus stop that goes to exactly none of these places. This area was deemed to be walkable, but walkable to what? The city of Austin assumed a 30-foot street width when making its recommendations. This itself is very tight. I surveyed several points on the street bridle path east and west of exposition. Please note that the street does not have sidewalks. I measured street width as narrow as 16 feet at Bridle Path in Elton, which is a T-intersection, 46% more narrow than the assumed width. Other points along the street measured at 24 feet, which is 20% more narrow than the baseline assumption. Other areas measured 28 feet, which can still have a disruptive impact when cars are parked on either side of the street and moving cars need to pass each other. As it stands now, two cars cannot pass each other without one pulling over in between the parked cars. The street is extremely narrow, and I'm sure this concern applies to several other streets where people in this room live, not just myself. Many streets cannot observe the four-unit multifamily properties or six that will be required to offer only two spaces of off-street parking because there are no sidewalks. If we realistically assume two adults per household, this results in eight new cars entering the neighborhood, two of which will be parked off the street, and six of which will be parked on the street. We must be realistic that each adult is going to have his own car, and with an inadequate transport system, people will not be relying on the bus. The bus system itself is inadequate and being used to justify some of these new zones. Unless someone in my transition zone works at a very specific point downtown, they will not be using the bus. I took the bus myself last week to see the impact, and after having to take a transfer and walk, my commute time increased by 562%. I've lived in a big city before with a real transit system. I chose to take the train as it only increased my commute by between 16 and 33%, and it was a great way to keep another car off the street. At a recent town hall, it was suggested by someone that the city's intent was to drive people to drive less and take the bus more. The next sound was laughter. I respectfully ask that you extend the timeline for a decision, actually engage with the community, and hit the bricks and firsthand see some of these streets and people, streets and areas that people are concerned about. And when you're there, you should honestly ask yourself, would this be a safe street with parked cars lining both sides if there was a fire or an emergency? Would I want my kids to ride their bikes or play on the street in between parked cars on either side of the street where they can't be passed? Please do the work. Thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Ryan Nill, followed by Hannah Frankel, then Daniel Lewis. Mr. Nill, you'll have three minutes.
I think I have nine minutes.
Okay. I don't have that information here. Can you tell me who's donating time?
Florent Marché.
Are you all signed up?
Yes.
Okay. Do you all know the numbers? I'm sorry. Do you all know your numbers?
I think they signed up after the numbers were given out.
Okay. All right. After you're done, can you please go sign up with Andrew? Thank you. Go ahead.
Can we update the time here so I can see it?
Yeah, time's updated.
All right. Thank you. All right. Well, let's get started then.
You'll have nine minutes, by the way.
Yes. Hello, my name's Ryan Nill. I recently got appointed to the Environmental Commission, but I am here not representing the commission, but my personal interests. And the Austin Cooperative Business Association, the Austin Cooperative Business Association, ACBA for short, is a, it's like a Chamber of Commerce for cooperative businesses. And cooperative businesses are a form of democratically managed business ownership. There are different types of co-ops. There's ones that are democratically managed by the workers, by consumers. So there's like Wheatsville Co-op is one of those. I work for a bookkeeping, financial management worker cooperative. But I'm here today to speak to you about housing cooperatives, which I've been living in for 10 years. And housing cooperatives are a form of community and democratically managed housing by the tenants. They kind of serve a missing middle between renting and ownership, where people get the different rights and responsibilities of both of these categories. So they can be a great way for people to kind of move up the ownership ladder without having to take that first really big jump of having $100,000, $200,000 down payment. So since it's democratically managed, the members of co-ops will, you know, most importantly, vote on what their rent will be for the next year. And with that money, they'll vote on whether to spend it on bulk food prep purchase, whether to hire contractors to do maintenance work on site or not, and managing the grounds. So this control of the housing stock allows for housing co-ops in Austin to be at 50% to 70% cost of market rates apartments in their neighborhoods. And most of these do this without any continuing subsidy. They also allow for a really deep sense of community and social engagement that's not really possible in other types of housing. So I first found out about co-ops in 2008, when I found out about a college co-op. And, you know, I walk in and there's like some guys playing ping pong in the dining room. There's some folks trying to study in front of a TV in the living room, and people cooking the nightly meal. And I fell in love with the model because it reminded me a lot of living with my extended family for the summer in Mexicali, Baja California. And it's something that I missed in kind of having like the standard American lifestyle. So that was kind of the social engagement is what drew me to cooperatives. After college, I went on to help found the Law Reunion Cooperative Apartments. It's a 20-unit apartment building in north central Austin, near Anderson Lamar. You know, we're very affordable. It's about like $900 for a 700-square-foot, two-bedroom apartment. But that includes a complete food plan and utilities, so it's really more like $700, like a dollar per square foot per month. And, you know, we're able to work with the community. We've worked with community groups to house homeless people. We've had several people come from the Caritos Veteran Homeless Vets Placement Program and a couple people from the Arch. So co-ops have this really great impact. They're great for the city, and I think that there has been a lot of improvements for cooperatives in the current code. Some of the positive changes is there's the addition of cottage courts, which allows for multiple small units to be placed facing around a common courtyard. There's the addition of cohousing, which allows for one central unit to have all of the facilities, and then the other surrounding units can have less of the facilities. So you have to, you know, have less appliances, less washing machines, less kitchens on site. And so this allows for good community living. And then there's a modification for the group residential to explicitly allow co-ops, which is some trouble we've had in the past where we didn't know where co-ops fit in in the previous code. So having spaces like this allows people to be incentivized and encouraged by the structure to have spontaneous interactions with each other, which is the key ingredient to fostering community. And there's no greater incentive than cooking and breaking bread with your friends and neighbors. So these are some uses that we should maintain, the cohousing, cottage courts, and group residential, and they're in there. Some of the things that we need to, and I would say allow them in more zones, especially the cohousing and the group residential. There's some limits on zones that they're not allowed in. I think we should increase those zones to be allowed by right. So many of the, another change is that many of the co-ops in town are operated by college students. And as you all, as you all know, during the winter break and the summer break, many college students go home to visit their families for the vacation. So during this point in time, a lot of the college co-ops will do short-term rentals to kind of help them cover the gap in housing when people are out of town. And the group residential use is very vague on, or the short-term rental definition makes it seem like group residential is not allowed. I don't understand why you wouldn't allow that in that setting, and particularly when the college co-ops can often rely on, often have to rely on this for additional income. So another issue that we've historically had is dealing with occupancy limits. So this is a community living where people will often, you know, there were many co-ops before there were occupancy limits in place. And the addition of occupancy limits to the code has made it much more difficult for co-ops to develop. I think in general, for occupancy limits, we should have a context-sensitive limit. It doesn't really make sense for like six people to live in a tiny studio, nor does it make sense for, you know, giant mansions to be mandated for only the wealthy, because, you know, if you can't have more people in them, they're not going to be able to afford unless they have the money to afford that mansion. So I think we should make it based on the number of bedrooms. I think a good proposal would be the number of bedrooms times two, which is actually less, it's stricter than the state of Texas will allow. So going with the state of Texas allows for higher occupancy limits. I'm also extremely interested in the preservation incentive. I think it's got a lot of impact to keep affordable housing on the ground, and it's going to have a lot of, I think, environmental impacts to reduce the amount of building waste. And if you all remember, it's reduce, and then reuse, and then finally recycle. So I think that's a really important environmental benefit. The way that I read it right now, it says that the incentive only allows for an additional one unit. So this stacks the incentive in favor of much smaller, less intense zones. So an additional unit means a lot, an R1, R2, but it means very little if you're seeking to preserve like a 100-unit apartment building, which is where bulk of our affordable housing currently is. So I think if we can retool this preservation incentive to be effective at these much higher levels where we see most of our affordable housing and where the most displacement is coming from, I think that's going to be a key component to making a more just code. You know, I think also, let's do something context-sensitive instead of just one unit. Maybe something based on the maximum unit, so like a percent on the max would be the incentive, I think. And, you know, I'm not a developer, so I don't know what the sweet spot is, but I think that is kind of the model that I would like work with to figure out what the sweet spot So like I said, community housing is a great way for people to live affordably, and then to have, you know, the things that people need most, which is contact with other people, social engagement and not isolation, you know, a place to eat with friends and be friends and have many things to do and an active social life. And, you know, it can all be done in a cooperative, so I hope you'll take these modifications into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Hannah Frankel, followed by Daniel Lewis. If Daniel Lewis will be ready at the other podium. And then we have Anne Graham.
Excuse me. I believe I have donated time.
Okay. And who was it donated from?
Evan Gill and Edward someone.
Evan Gill and Edward someone?
Hold on. I have a text.
Is Edward here? Okay, ma'am, you'll have six minutes.
Daniel, I was way off. Daniel Brickley.
Is Daniel here? Okay, you'll have six minutes.
All right. Thank you all for being here today. I know it's a long day for many of us, but especially you all. So thank you for your patience and service and listening to a lot of different points of views. I'm excited to see this draft, and I do think it's a step in the right direction for a number of reasons. I'm specifically here today to speak in support of the goals of the Austin Cooperative Business Association. That's the ACBA that Ryan over there just now was referencing. So I'm also a resident and co-founder of Law Reunion Co-op. I've lived there for getting towards seven years, and I lived in the community co-ops and student co-ops before that. So many people associate cooperatives in Austin with the student cooperatives. In other parts of the country, they were actually founded and moved forward by labor unions predominantly, so that's kind of an Austin quirk. So I bring this up to say that they really do serve a broader base of people than their student connotations in Austin. In Austin, though, many of us have moved on from the student cooperative housing sector and decided, you know, I, for myself, for example, I got my bachelor's a long time ago. I went on to get my master's. I never saw a reason to leave. I like living with other people. I like living lightly and with a smaller footprint. I like living affordably. It's offered me a lot of benefits. As somebody who grew up in a very rural area too, I'm very familiar with the, with the feeling of not having a lot of people immediately surrounding you. And because of that, I intend to raise my children in cooperatives. So I, I've lived in co-ops overall for 12 years, so there are personal, social, and economic benefits. Cooperatives are affordable to people making 25% or less of the median family income. So at Law Reunion, we have a truly mixed income community that I have never even seen in, you know, in media otherwise. So I live next door to people that are on Social Security Disability or Retirement Benefits. My neighbors are also software developers, Section 8 recipients, single parents, servers, teachers, formerly homeless people, and administrative workers, just to name a few to give you a range. So it is a truly, it is a truly diverse community, and I find that very valuable for my own being a citizen who respects the rights of the other people in the city. They're not abstract to me. They are, they live next door. Cooperatives in Austin offer rents available at 40% to 60% of market rent in Austin. So for, to make it personal again, cooperatives allow people like me to dedicate more time to aging parents, visiting distant family, to be involved in community efforts like this one. And that's because I don't have to spend all my time making money to afford a mortgage or a very high rent. Because my housing costs do not consume my entire paycheck, I was able to save and start my own business before the age of 30. And I credit a lot of that to cooperatives and the fact that I had the scenario where I could realistically do that. My situation at Law Reunion is comfortable and happy, but I don't think it's right to say I've got mine nuts to the next person and metaphorically pull the ladder up after me. I think we that have done well in this city and have a good place and a good life have a duty to look at how we can pay that forward and try to make that something that more people can share, and including people that don't live here yet. Right now, at Law Reunion, we turn people away every month, and we, our waitlist is only growing. There is a demand for this style of living, cooperative living, as something that allows people to live affordable, affordably, but also in a way that is more socially connected and more environmentally friendly. Ryan mentioned the effect of social bonding and contact on health. I am actually, I'm a clinical social worker by profession, and it's something that shows up in my office all the time, is people that have a lot of problems, but chief among their difficulty to regulate those problems is loneliness and disconnection. So cooperatives have done a lot for me, is my point, and now I consider it my responsibility to share that impact so that more people can have access to the good things I've got. On a personal level too, I'd like to say that while not all cooperatives are situated in a denser apartment-style block, I personally really enjoy living in a dense, likable neighborhood at an affordable price. And that's a style of living that has a large compelling draw for a lot of people of my generation and of my, of my income level. So I would like it if that could be respected and understood by people that may not have that particular inclination. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Daniel Lewis, followed by Anne Graham, then Alice Agatston, then Jen Burbis, and then Darren Burner. Mr. Lewis, you'll have three minutes.
Hi. I'm also here in support of cooperatives, just as Ryan and Hannah have just spoken. My name is Daniel Harsy Lewis, and I've lived in Austin for the past seven years and in cooperatives for the past six. I was a student for most of those years, and now I'm actually a permit researcher with the University of Texas. The entire time, these past seven years that I've lived in Austin, I have managed to pay less than $650 per month in rent while still living centrally. And that's largely due to the fact that I've lived in cooperatives for six, seven years. Because cooperatives allow me to live affordably and centrally, I've never needed to own a car to go to college or to go to work. I still own one now, and I don't plan to buy one. I believe this is the goal of the city of Austin. We collectively manage the house in every cooperative house I've lived in, so I've never, and, and we collectively manage the house in every cooperative I've ever lived in. By collective management, I mean we collectively maintain the house. I've never had to waste my time to go shopping for groceries or tools to maintain a house. Someone else in my cooperative, anyone in the cooperatives I've lived in, has taken care of that for me. And I've gotten to take, to dedicate my time, and a more limited amount of that time, to doing what I'm good at, I think, which is cooking dinner for my housemates. Ryan, I don't believe, mentioned it so explicitly, but he helped his cooperative take over the ownership, the apartment that previously operated that building, which allows him and his fellow tenants to set rent affordably. I specialize in renters' cooperatives personally, and have even started a renters' cooperative here in Austin, which provides housing affordably to its tenants while simultaneously building equity in the name of the tenants, so that tenants can jump onto the equity ladder and purchase their first home collectively. I'm sure many of the homeowners here remember purchasing their first house, but let's be realistic here. Given how expensive property has become centrally in the city, cooperatives are one of the few effective tools we can have, that we have available to allow members of my generation to take their first step onto the equity ladder. I've read hundreds of pages of the relevant sections of the proposed code, as well as the current code, plus a few dozen pages from the 2003 and 1982 codes, codes for context. Given the historical arc of how the code has impacted cooperatives, I believe this proposed code is a return to the right direction. I applaud the return of group residential use to multi-unit housing, which was a key feature of the pre-1984 code that helped the cooperative system expand dramatically from a few houses in the 60s to about two dozen houses in the 1970s. Every cooperative in Austin currently has a long waitlist and has had one for the entire time, all seven years I've lived in Austin. I had, myself personally, had to wait a full year to get to live in a cooperative due to the long waitlists. So I know the great amount of desire for cooperative living here in Austin. I fully support the points that Ryan mentioned, the specific policy points that we are advocating for, and I believe that there is a demand for cooperatives in Austin, that you guys should also support that demand, to live affordably and centrally.
Thank you. Commissioners, we only have seven on the dais. Please don't leave until another commissioner returns. Anne Graham, and then Alice Agatston, followed by Jen, Jennifer Burbis. Ms. Graham, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Anne Graham. I am a 25-year resident of Austin, purchased a house here in 1994 with my husband and raised our two boys who went to public school, graduated from both from AISD. I'm not going to talk about the particulars of Code Next, there's a lot of people who are articulating it today, but I am going to reference a letter that I sent to all of you, and sent to City Council, and sent to The Chronicle and to The Statesman for publication, based on the issue that Susan Almans also touched upon, the city must halt displacement on the East Riverside Corridor, and what the implications of that are on this Code Next proposal. So I'm reading the letter that I wrote to you. I want this to be in the public record. I said, "Am I the only one?" Question mark, actually, I know Susan Almans agrees with me. "Am I the only one who finds some hypocrisy in the city's current effort to upzone significant parts of the central city through the newest version of Code Next, when it is simultaneously sanctioning the displacement of 1,308 affordable apartment units by rezoning them as part of the 92-acre domain on Riverside? If the city is aiming to build over 400,000 new dwelling units through the new zoning for Code Next, assuming that is how many it will take to get to the over 9,000 affordable units," these are data that was provided to us from the city, "well, they just lost 1,308 right on Riverside. Meanwhile, since the initiation of the East Riverside Corridor planning process, more than 1,000 other affordable units have been demolished, and thousands more are in the pipeline to be raised. It is also not heartening to read, 'On the East Riverside Corridor, the city's corridor density bonus program has failed to produce any affordable housing so far.'" That's very relevant when we're talking about what an affordability benefit might, what impact that may have in Code Next. "Why are we not assessing the current affordable assets and working to maintain them before we set to destroy the fabric of central cities' single-family neighborhoods that already readily support ADUs, duplexes, neighborhood-scale apartment buildings, et cetera, for a mix of residential options?" Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Alice Agatston, and I live on Avenue D, one block south of UT Intramural Fields. And I'm an artist and a welder. And partly because of my welding, I'm very aware of solid structures. On June 22 of this year, my property was flooded by a water main break on 46th Street, and it caused $50,000 worth of damage to floor, to my foundation and buckled flooring. I did put in a claim to the city, but it was denied because a piece of their equipment didn't actually cause it, although the city says that if my neighbor caused it, then they would have to pay. But in any case, they came out to the house, and I talked to them a number of times, and they said, "Well, it occurred on the weekend." You know, and then someone there said they didn't have sandbags, and then the person who came out said, "Well, they could put sandbags on a truck." Then I learned at a local neighborhood meeting that this was the third water main break north of 45th Street. So I moved forward, and I thought, "Well," and I have to check with Watershed, because since I live on Waller Creek, Watershed in 2018 announced they had a project in 2020 to stabilize the creek bed. And I didn't want to do work on my foundation before that was done, because that would be heavy equipment that could shake things up. So the person that I spoke with at Watershed said they had a new engineer on the job, but that they didn't have the money for the project, and maybe something might happen by the end of 2020, but he said, he advised me to move this, sell and move as soon as possible. Then I called the tax protest office, the Travis County Tax Process Office, because the 2019 occurrence of this flood is not, is not included in the assessment of the property, the marketing value. And he said, I told him that the infrastructure didn't seem like it was going to be maintained in, in a way that could no less, couldn't support current needs, and so how could it support more people? But at that point, I wasn't aware of Code Next, but I just, but I was aware of the stability of the structure, and that, that it was very haphazard here. They didn't have, they didn't have a plan to improve the water mains. They just had, they were going to just deal with it as they broke. And then the watershed, and the person there was very nice, but he basically said, "Well, we don't have the money for it." So it made me feel like there wasn't, wasn't adequate planning to, for, for the current infrastructure. And then I also, the person at the Travis County Protest said that the planning was bad, and he advised me to sell and move as soon as possible. Let's see. Then I looked up the actual code, because I live on Waller Creek, so it's a flood zone, and the code said that I needed to, I could maintain but not improve. Oh. And then the final thing is that I visited UT Intramural Fields where they did improve, and that did have an impact on Waller Creek, and he said I needed to create better drainage. So my basic reaction is that they need to have the infrastructure for current and for future, and that without that, it's, you can't have a stable housing situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Jennifer Burbis. You have time donated by Margot Carrico.
Oh, great.
Is she here?
She's going to be the rest.
I'm sorry? Are you, are you Margot?
I'm Gatsi. This is the person donating.
Okay. And Susan Spies? Okay, ma'am, you'll have six minutes.
Great, thanks. I have my husband here with me. We actually met in co-ops 30 years ago, so we love the co-op talk. We are both vocal advocates for affordable housing. We love density. We know that families don't need single-family housing. Our family has lived in multifamily housing before. We would love to see more density in Austin. As it grows, we think it's a worthy exercise to create more locally-owned, reasonable density in Austin. We are clearly not NIMBYs. I have also worked in the financial markets for 16 years, primarily in the field of statistical arbitrage. I now work in real estate as an investor, redeveloping my own portfolio and by adding ADUs. I'm going through our portfolio and adding more density. We own three properties, properties in three different districts in Austin, and we understand the costs and process involved in smaller-scale redevelopment efforts. Since the proposed code was published, we basically have spent all of our free time and a significant portion of our workdays researching the impact of the proposed code on land pricing and how the proposed code will impact supply and pricing. There seem to be many inconsistencies and unintended consequences of the proposed code. We don't believe simply adding more supply is a solution to an affordability issue. We think it's a lot more nuanced than that. The final price of a structure simply can't be lower than the cost of building that structure. The inflationary forces that are at work right now to cause the high cost of building in Austin are beyond the reach of this commission and extend far beyond Austin. It costs, you know, about $319 a square foot to build a six-unit apartment complex. We will never get units in that, in that, have a market price below $444,000 with that math. What we have done is we've looked at central Austin neighborhoods that are getting upzoned to RM1, and based on our market analysis, we believe that the land values are going to go up between 60% and 70%. And we all know that when land values go up, property tax values go up. Land values in this area are approximately $480,000 right now. We think that the places that can take six units and the FAR, we think they will go up to the mid-700s for land value. Market rates for the 1,000-square-foot, missing-middle housing that would be developed would be at $450,000, $444,000, and a monthly payment of $3,000 a month. This hardly feels affordable. What I want to stress is that, given the proposed code in RM1 zoning... given the proposed code in RM1 zoning, builders will be able to pay approximately $700,000 for a 7,000-square-foot lot and be profitable, given current building costs. If this goes, code goes into effect, based on our analysis of homestead exemptions, we believe that in some areas, the sale of properties will be swift, and the profits will be staggering. I know this because we've already done the pro formas. We've also done pro formas on some affordable rental units on Enfield west of MOPAC. Another speaker coincidentally covered exactly those same properties that I was going to cover, so I actually pulled those out of my notes. We did a pro forma on that area, and those fourplexes that she was showing, if you tear those down, you can build six townhomes in their place with a profit of $1.5 million, and a market value on those townhomes of $750,000. Our other concern is that we haven't had time to adequately research, and we think, we have a lot of other issues that we think need to be delved into more deeply by somebody. Perhaps some of this has been done, and if it has been, we can't find it anywhere in the public domain. Our other issues are how many older adults will be displaced with the proposed code, and the commensurate increase in property taxes. We don't know that. We think that's probably relatively easy data to figure out if we had the time. We think with some market analysis, we can come up with a better solution. STR3s are allowed at the rate of 25% in multifamily in the current zoning, in the proposed zoning. If we have a supply problem, how are we allowing any of that supply coming online to be STR3s? STR1s help Austinites stay in their homes by helping them supplement their income for property taxes. STR3s, none of the stakeholders or constituents of Austin benefit from this. This is really only benefits commercial developers in multifamily housing. When land values increase substantially, there's this weird edge case. If you have a single-family home that is homesteaded, and there's already been an ADU put in the back of the lot, your homestead only applies to the part of the structure that you live in. Nobody can answer, either at the city or at the county, we've asked, nobody can answer what's going to happen to the land value underneath these ADUs. We envision a situation where you will be able, that basically a homeowner that has built an ADU in the last couple of years, their property taxes will get to a point where it's beneficial for them to sell instead, because they don't have the homestead protection on the land underneath the ADU. And this could obviously an unintended consequence. I think everybody doesn't really mind the ADUs. We all know density is going to happen in Austin, and we're going that direction. I don't, I don't think we want those torn down, and I think we're creating a situation where they will be torn down. We all know the property tax system in Texas is deeply flawed. We can't fix it. Nobody in this room can. But we have to be aware of the system that we work within. And there are some holes in the proposed code that I think have some unintended consequences, property taxes. Given all of this, there are so many places in the code where we seem to incentivize tearing down older multifamily homes and more affordable units. We don't know what the economic impacts are going to be on property taxes. We don't know what the impact is going to be on the displacement of older adults that live within transition zones. This is very near and dear to my heart. And staff is still making late-night edits to the code. And what we would like to ask is, why can't we slow this down? We don't have a national example of this kind of change resulting in affordability.
Final thoughts, ma'am?
Oh, that's the six minutes. Okay, great. And we are trying to solve an issue in this country that is seen nationwide and is impacted by economic forces far outside of our control. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Darren Burner, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank you commissioners, council, and city staff for tackling, trying to tackle this very complex issue. And also, thank you for getting me to be more involved with my neighbors. I've met more neighbors in the last couple of weeks than I have in the last several years. My name is Darren Burner. That was my wife who just spoke. We're central Austin residents, among other things. We're real estate investors, and we own properties in three different districts. We support density. We love density. I lived in Chicago for seven years. I didn't have a car. I thought it was fantastic. But this process feels rushed. It's an extremely complex problem, and we worry about unintended consequences. For example, I've spoken to city staff, I've spoken to the mayor, and they've told me that the city does not expect property taxes to rise because of this new zoning. I've talked to several people since then, because I'm like, did I not hear this right? And I'm hearing about they're playing word games, but the impression that they've left, not necessarily staff, but the mayor left with us is the city does not expect property taxes to rise with the proposed code. This shows a complete lack of understanding of how our property tax system works, or, I think, a willful blindness. City council set a goal of 135,000 additional units over 10 years. Great. I understand your logic. I think that makes a lot of sense. City council believes that we need to add three times, we need to use a 3X multiplier, so 400,000 capacity. Should we use a 3X multiplier? Should we use a 2X multiplier? I don't know. But given that the city hasn't seemed to consider the property tax implications of this new code, I don't have high confidence that this won't have a much greater impact in a much shorter time than expected with unexpected consequences. This is a complex problem. I support density. I support evolving neighborhoods. I do not support destroying neighborhoods. Please slow down this process. Please slow down this process so that we can work through this complicated process together as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have number 111, Ann Foster, then Karen Gatto, then David Whitworth, then Victor Green. If y'all will be ready in the front to go up right away. Ms. Foster, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you, and I'm glad to see that people are still awake. I'm struggling. We got here at nine o'clock, signed up, and here we are. All right. So I am one of those older unintended consequences. I own property right off of 45th in the southern part of District 7 in South Allendale neighborhood. And we are already experiencing what density looks like in that neighborhood, if you look across the street and see the Grove development. The idea that we're going to put, it's on a transit corridor, and that buses are going to go down 45th, I'd encourage all of y'all to drive down 45th. It's an old cow road to Shoal Creek. It weaves, it turns, et cetera, and there's no way that a bus can even get down there right now. So if you're contemplating on a transit corridor down 45th, you ought to take a look at it. I checked, there are 40 houses that are affected by this code development proposal in three streets around my house. I have a 1,200-foot square house, and the RM1 designation will allow someone to put a six-unit, what, four-story house on that piece of property? I will, I don't think that's realistic under the circumstances. I know, I agree with those two people who spoke earlier. I think density is a good thing. I just think it needs to be a little bit more sensitive to what's going on, to the individualized of the neighborhood, and the individual character of each neighborhood. I will be taxed out of my property. I'm already taxed, I'm retired. My husband will be retiring soon. I've owned that piece of property for 25 years, and I am an Austin native, and I will have to leave Austin. Because if I'm taxed out of that house, there's no place in Austin that I can live, so I'll be gone. And I've been a good citizen, and I'm a good addition, and I think there are many people in my neighborhood who are of the same type. I do believe, and I'm not an economist, I'm not good with math, but I do get the general principles that those individuals were just talking about. My property taxes will increase, and we're not sure whether it will increase twice, three times over time, but I will be unable to afford my property. I think that that's a taking, basically, of my property rights without compensation. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am. And then after you is David Whitworth.
Hello, my name is Karen Gatto. I'm a neighbor of Ann's, actually, and I would note that, as she said, she lives in a 1,200-square-foot house. We're not talking about large houses at this point in time. We're talking about relatively modest footprints. We're talking about disrupting. As I have heard today, I understand that the rewrite of the land development code is not yet complete, and a number of sections and changes have been made overnight. Given the proposal itself is not stable, it seems optimistic to commit to a vote on it within two months. But at the end of the day, I'm going to look to Claire, Todd, Greg, Carmen, James, Vette, Isol, Patricia, Robert, and Dawn for you to decide what's reasonable. If you feel comfortable voting on something that's incomplete, not measurable, not sustainable, as far as a measurable quantitative success story that can be proven to the public, that's going to be your personal decision. All I can say is, the public is looking to you to deliver a good solution to, that can be proven, measured, and people that live here can support. In that vein, I would encourage you to consider a thoughtful deployment of this plan to demonstrate to everyone that it is going to accomplish the goals that you want it to accomplish. That's all I say.
Thank you. David, you are number 113. You have time donated by Melissa Brown, number 93. Is Melissa here? Okay, you'll have three minutes.
Okay. So a lot of the problems we're hearing about affordability, and taxes being too high, and being pushed out but having nowhere to go, are problems that exist under today's code. And the only way to solve these things, the only tool we have, is a new code. So as difficult as this task is, this is a necessary task. I just want to kind of address concerns that new code means things will be more expensive, and I have direct experience with code making things more affordable. A few years ago, when we were building homes using small-odd amnesty, the accessory structures on the alleys rented for $800 a month, which was below 80% MFI at market rate. They were small. And then the primaries could collect that rent, and the cost of ownership came down to median home price for new housing. And it also increased the amount of units. Unfortunately, that was shut down, and I just, I have, I feel obligated to bring up a real-world experience where code and market builders can deliver housing. 50% of the roofs we were putting up were 80% MFI rentals. The, I know there's concerns about transition zones. I'm not sure that R2A and R2B lot sizes really are small enough to address this, but if the transition zones are the trade-off, then so be it. I personally feel that all legally-platted heritage small lots should be legalized again in the code today. They were surveyed by the city engineer at the time, which is how it used to work, and they are legitimate home sites. But they surprisingly disappeared once racial restrictions were overturned. The flooding concerns, the new code, when you go pull a building permit for a single house, or an ADU, or an additional bedroom, will require you to take your lot back to natural state flood controls, whether it's paying out, fee and lieu, hiring an engineer for analysis. But this is a great thing, and people are concerned, and rightly so, about flooding, but everybody's going to have to chip in moving forward, and that will allow us to have 65% impervious cover for affordable homes in some places. I live in the Duval Transition Zone, and I hear concerns about that. I don't have any plans for utilizing a new code should it happen, but I want to tell y'all that around me are vacant lots and vacant houses. And don't forget that transition zones in Hyde Park still have to adhere to the historic design guidelines, which also reference the NCCD. So it will, there are a lot of controls. Let's just remember that these are the tools we have, and our goals are positive goals, and we can all work together with each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Victor Green, and then after that, Holly Hodge and Anil Nazareth. Victor, in the room? Okay, Holly Hodge.
You have three minutes. Thank you. Hello, my name is Holly Hodge, and I'm a native Austinite. I grew up in District 10, and I now live in District 1, where I attend UT as a neuroscience, urban studies, and philosophy major. So I've gotten to learn some about the issues y'all are facing here today, but I know it's a very difficult decision, and I want to thank everyone who's spoken today, because I feel like I've learned a lot. And also thank Planning Commission, because this is a very difficult job. I'm currently 21, and I love Austin, and I would like to be able to live here till I am 81 and grow up in this city. And currently, I don't believe the way our land development code is written is conducive to creating the density needed in order for people like me and my friends who grew up in Austin to continue to live here. And I'm here mainly to support having the density in the land development code that is being outlined, even though obviously there's a lot of nuances to that, and many considerations that need to be taken considering on each individual neighborhood. Density has been shown to create walkable areas that are very beneficial for both human health and the environment, and I think this is key for the vision of Austin going forward. I grew up in a single-family zoned housing area, and this is not the type of neighborhood I want to live in or grow and raise a family in. And I think that creating dense, diverse neighborhoods are essential, that have key access to parks and transit. And I also want to advocate for form-based codes in some historical neighborhoods in Austin, to not just make livable cities, but also beautiful cities that are architecturally and context-sensitive. Thank you.
Thank you. Anil Nazareth, after Anil, Jenny Bailey, and Leslie Dean Jones.
Hi. I'd like to speak in favor of the kind of zoning changes that are in the new LDC. I first moved to Austin as a child in 1979, and over the past decade, I've rented in a number of places in Austin, in Far West, and in Hyde Park. And five years ago, I bought my first home in Delwood 1. The zoning for my block in the LDC draft is changing from SF3 to RM1, and I believe that this is a good change. One of the reasons why I decided to purchase my house was for ease of access to downtown. It's been great. In five years of working for an Austin-based tech company, my usual commute to my job has been a leisurely 20-minute bike ride. Occasionally, I've had to use my motorcycle to get downtown, and easy access to Airport Boulevard gives me a number of quick ways to get downtown, even if traffic on I-35 is congested. I believe that it is essential that as Austin grows, we make sure that as many people as possible have this kind of access to the urban core. I think that increasing density in neighborhoods like mine is key to that. I'd also like to amplify others' concerns about lack of bike lanes and sidewalks, but I don't think that we should expect a new land development code to solve all of our problems at once. Let's take a step in the right direction, and then keep making progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenny Bailey?
Hi, thank you. Yes, I'm Jenny Bailey. Thank you for your service to our city. I think there should be significant upzoning on the west side of the city. I'm retired, and I own my own single-family cottage in Deep Eddy, and I'm in a proposed transition zone. Austin has a history of racism against people of color who are locked out of, or forced out of, the west side through discriminatory laws and practices like redlining. It's been sad to sit here since 9:30 this morning and listen to privileged white person after privileged white person complain that property they have owned for decades, complaining that property they've owned for decades is going to be, is more valuable. So they want you to protect their white privilege by keeping density on the west side low. Also, an earlier speaker told you people who live in expensive homes near Enfield won't ride the bus. I live there, and I ride the 18, I ride the 4, I ride the 663. I rode the 21 and 22 when they were there. And I walked here today because I believe if I use my car less, that helps the environment, and it will protect things for future generations. So, and I really think that newer people who moved into the neighborhood might be more open to taking the bus. So my neighborhood is vibrant and high opportunity, and I'm very thankful for that. But it's not just my neighborhood. It belongs to all of Austin. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Leslie Dean Jones, Ann Tucker, and David Guarino. Leslie Dean Jones, Ann Tucker, and David Guarino. Leslie Dean Jones? Ann Tucker? David Guarino? Oh, sorry. What's your name, please?
Ann. Ann Tucker.
Thank you. You have three minutes.
I recognize the, and respect the arduous tasks that the city and you as volunteers and all of the citizens of Austin have in front of them. And it is due to this difficult and complex task that I oppose the speed with which this process is subject to, and I implore you to slow the process down so that we can take a granular look at this new code development. It's hard not to look at this code and think about your personal impact, so I apologize if I make this personal. My family and I live at the end of Texas Avenue, which is a very small street in Hancock, one block south of 38th. It deadends at Waller Creek. Our lot is only 6,000, it's about 6,000 square feet, and it has been upzoned to RM1. This new designation, coupled with the new occupancy rules, is an exponential increase and not a contextual increase. I, like many speakers here, am pro-density, but I am pro-responsible and contextual density. My husband and I were currently in the process of doing a modest addition for our growing family and adding an ADU in that we want to support density, and it's also a good way for us to help manage our primary asset and keep property taxes at bay. To learn more about the changes, I attended a town hall where the city staff, led by Anique Bode, did an incredible job explaining what's coming at us. And Anique said something that really stuck in my head, and I understand it was just a manner of speaking and a figure of speech, but she, in describing RM1, said, "If your property is zoned, RM1, you could develop six units or up to 10 with the density bonuses." And I thought about that "you," and I went home, and my husband and I had a conversation, and I said, "Given our current economic situation, we're both independent small business owners, and could we go to the bank and leverage enough capital to maximize the new entitlements?" And the answer to that is no. And so my question to, and I went to a neighborhood, collective neighborhood meeting with the mayor, and I asked the mayor, I said, "Who then is the 'you' in this statement? Who is the 'you' and you can redevelop your property to 6 to 10?" And I don't see myself or my neighbors in that "you." That does not mean we are not pro-density and we're not pro-change, but such an exponential imposition of a new paradigm, really, excludes citizens. Thank you for your time, and I would ask that you think about who the "you" is.
Thank you. After David Guarino, Nick Van Bevel, I think, or Linda Van Bevel? Go ahead, you have three minutes.
So, good afternoon, Commission members. Thank you for your service, and thank you for giving up the Texas Book Festival to do this. My name is David Guarino, I'm from Hancock neighborhood. When the term limited city council departs into history, its members will leave behind a land development code that represents a missed opportunity for Austin. The new code will begin to fail almost immediately because it uses the wrong tools to produce the wrong results. The LDC will ban most new single-family housing. This will do nothing to make housing more affordable because existing affordable homes, and there's still quite a few of them, are either being demolished or snapped up by institutional investors for conversion to regular or short-term rentals. The first neighborhoods to be affected will be those with the least expensive housing, since these properties tend to increase most rapidly in value. This shuts working and middle-class families out of the market, but the draft code doesn't really address this problem at all. Families will be driven to the suburbs, increasing suburban sprawl. The LDC will award investors increased entitlements along major roadways, referred to as transit corridors, a powerful incentive for redevelopment of existing low-cost apartments, which are disproportionately located along transit corridors. It's likely that mass evictions will soon follow, leaving tenants with fewer affordable options. Renters will leave Austin to find housing, causing yet more suburban sprawl and producing more labor shortages as a byproduct. Affordable housing for university students will become scarce in the city limits. When developers overbuild, they won't necessarily cut rents, but will instead convert apartments to short-term rentals, leaving the new units permanently out of reach of working people. The LDC will continue its over-reliance on density bonus programs, which have an ugly track record of accelerating displacement of working and middle-class residents while producing little affordable housing. What is produced will be out of reach of the city's working and middle-class residents and all but the most affluent students. With little incentive for voluntary developer participation or compliance, density bonus programs will likely generate little revenue for affordable housing funds and will produce few affordable housing units. The LDC will likely make many, perhaps thousands of existing properties in the city non-conforming or non-compliant, even if they are conforming today. This will likely make currently credit-worthy properties less so. This is particularly true for small businesses. A likely outcome will be to force small businesses out of the city as well, and perhaps small real estate investors and landlords. The LDC will truncate the landmark Save Our Springs ordinance and will allow more development in already dense areas of the city. This will likely lead to more serious flooding in future, particularly in a downtown bounded by Waller and Shoal Creeks. Finally, the LDC will fail because City Hall never really considered its own citizens as stakeholders in its creation. They never consulted the people possessing knowledge about conditions on the ground in their neighborhoods. The likely result will be an irretrievable loss of community and chaos in regional real estate markets for years to come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm going to call again, Nick Van Bevel? Okay. Dick Collerman, and then John Halvergon.
What numbers are you?
168, Dick Collerman, and 171, John Halvergon. Oh, Daniel Yannis, yes, sorry. It's, I thought it had said here that you had donated time, but we got that figured out.
So, am I next?
Yes, go ahead.
All right.
Thank you very much, and we've all been here all day. I don't envy you all. My name is Daniel Yannis, and I was here last Tuesday testifying on the neighborhood plans. So these are global recommendations that I'm making to you regarding the land development code rewrite. So the first one is about global, the first few are about global warming, heat island effect, flooding, and the, and those effects by development. I'm suggesting to you that we preserve the tree canopy, that we increase the minimum size and also, thank you, the minimum size and also the kinds of trees. And actually, I will go further and say that we should have a moratorium on all tree cutting in Austin and in central Texas. And I'm talking about global warming. I'm talking about the fact that we're going to have more severe weather. It's not going to get better, and I have to say that we cannot do business the way we have done. The status quo is creating more flooding. The status quo is creating more heat island effect. We need those trees, we need all the flora we can get, and we need to eliminate cement, impervious cover. So as far as impervious cover, there should be a cap on all impervious cover, there should be a limit of 60% on all commercial properties, a limit to, 50% to residential properties. We should, the code rewrite number three had a statement that said 100, 90% impervious cover for commercial? Man, the future is not that. We need to roll it back. As a matter of fact, I'm suggesting that we retrofit all public parking lots with pervious cover and set the example for the rest of the city. We've got to address global warming in the most real way, and these are actual things that we can do right now. Maintain the current residential and commercial relationship property, the setbacks for residential and commercial. Those setbacks are important, they're what keeps us from becoming Houston. Now, I'm going to move to housing and displacement. There should, because, well, there should not be any upzoning in the Eastern Crescent. This is systemic racism that we're talking about, there should be not a stitch of upzoning in the Eastern Crescent. And we need to preserve existing housing stock as a priority to building new housing stock, because that's the most affordable one. Am I right? And one of the things that's lacking for renters, one of the big blights for renters is the fact that landlords get away with substandard property, and they never fix it. So I, part of this land development code should address that. There should be the elimination of the 10% at 80%, and the density bonuses, those are not, they have never been mechanisms for affordable housing, they're mechanisms for, I only have just a couple of more things, please. Establish incentives, eliminate these incentives, the bonus, the density bonus, they're nowhere. But we can establish incentives for affordable price point housing, not just affordable, I'm talking about giving incentives to developers to bill housing for people who make between $40,000 and $60,000 a year. Let's try that as a real thing. Establish incentives for large developments that include 30% affordable housing. And I'll give you, the real example is the Think East project. Right now, 30% of that project is below 60% MFI. And the other one is use our housing project model to build housing in both the public and the private sector. And I mentioned that last time I was here, and if you all are interested, I'd be happy to let you know what that housing project is. The last thing I will say is undoing systemic racism and racial equity. The land development code needs to have a component to develop a displacement strategy. There's no data about the adverse effects of this code on displacement. And there should be, I already said that, there should be no upzoning in the Eastern Crescent. The last thing that I will say is that the land development code rewrite must be vetted through the equity lens before it is adopted. Thank you very much for your time, thank you for indulging me.
All right, next we have Brenda Malik. Are you Brenda?
I'm Sarah.
Sarah, okay, Sarah. After Sarah, Caroline Bailey and Adrian Skinner. You have three minutes, three minutes from 103. So you'll have six minutes.
Hi, my name is Sarah Cook. I feel that time has accelerated a little bit, frankly, so I'm a little surprised to be up here speaking, but I'm glad to be able to address you before it gets too late in the day. I am the current co-president of the Hyde Park Neighborhood Association. I come here to represent a number of views that I've heard from a lot of my neighbors, you've heard from a lot of them already today, and I'd like to call out some themes. I'd then like to recognize some of the folks who spoke who I may not be familiar with, with whom I also agree on a number of issues. So I think you've heard a bunch already about the concerns of the upzoning on Duval Street and its appropriateness as a large-scale transit corridor. I think that you've heard from a number of folks about our concerns around affordability. I want to speak to something. Fee and lieu doesn't help neighbors. And I think that a lot of us are excited at the opportunity to maintain the income diversity in our neighborhood that we believe will be lost, as our current naturally occurring affordable housing is demolished to make way for larger structures. The fee and lieu opportunity allows folks to build more, as you know, without putting affordability on sight, and I think that it would be a real shame to get all of the density and none of the income diversity that we have currently. So I'd like y'all to keep that in mind. I'd also like to speak to some of the environmental and infrastructure concerns. Again, these are things that you've heard before. We had a neighbor come here and talk about the water mains that are broken in North Hyde Park in the past six months, I think we've had three. It does raise, I think, some legitimate questions about our ability to serve additional units that are provided. And I think one thing we'd be interested in discussing with the city is what does it look like to have density triggered by infrastructure milestones? I know that there's going to be some capacity built in North Hyde Park for additional stormwater drainage. Until that's done, we shouldn't increase the density there. Particularly true when, within the Waller Creek watershed, we see the impervious cover modeled as going up in there, and we're one of two watersheds, and we already have extreme localized flooding on Avenue A and 45th Street. There is a Guadalupe storm drainage project that is also taking place, but that's just being built to manage the current capacity upstream. So all of these things, as you've heard, I think a gentleman say, "Sure, the land development code isn't going to solve it all." No, but it could also exacerbate current problems. So let's create a well-crafted series of milestones and gates through which the city has to walk together before we add additional density. I think that you've, I need to represent, excuse me, neighborhood concerns around the parking requirements. A lot of people are very concerned that with our sidewalks in Hyde Park being only 38% complete and many of our streets being narrow, it will be even more dangerous for folks to walk the dogs, walk to school, walk to the bus, and so on, without sidewalks being built. This is another example of infrastructure that should proceed before additional density. And again, I think if we can get solid commitments from the city, however, when we were on the phone the other day with some folks from the Transportation Department, they indicated how sorely unfunded the sidewalk fund is. So I think we have some legitimate concerns around there, and again, would urge that we slowed down. Something I think we've heard about around occupancy limits, hey, I love the co-op model and anything that brings our neighbors Jen and Darren together, who met and got married subsequently. I think that's great. But I do know that in our experience, the occupancy limits have, in the past, accelerated the demolition of that naturally affordable, naturally occurring affordable housing in favor of larger units that then can be rented by the bedroom and serve a lot of people. I think that there is a natural tension here. I am certainly not against some of the cooperative housing that we've heard described. Certainly know that lots of students call Hyde Park home now, and we hope that they'll be able to stay. But I do think that there are some unintended consequences around some of the issues in this code that's proposed that could really damage what we have. Also want to talk, of course, about the local historic district, which is south of 45th Street. I think there are real concerns about maintaining the integrity of that, which contains not only a local historic district, but is on the National Register of Places, both for Hyde Park and then for a subsection called Shadow Lawn. I think those are things that we need to think about. And finally, I want to say that so much of this has been divisive, and I tell you what, you know, in my position, and my co-president is here with me, this is really hard work, and it is particularly made harder by the amount of negativity that I think all of us maybe fall prey to every once in a while. But there's a lot that I've heard of from other folks, as I've said, that I agree with. Fourplexes make a lot of sense. There should be more fourplexes in the city. It's also not inappropriate to suggest that there should be some lot sizes that accompany that in some thoughtful, context-sensitive ways, just like the young woman who spoke who's at UT, who said she's for density, and she's also for beautiful, affordable, and walkable neighborhoods. I think we all are, and so I think it behooves us at this time to work on those things on which we can agree, take some time together to develop strategies that at least we can get some neighborhood citizenship, renter consensus around, and move forward together, pump the brakes on this part a little bit, take some time, slow the process, find those areas where we do have agreement, and work together for a code that will serve us all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Caroline Bailey, Adrian Skinner. May Taylor? After Ms. Taylor, Kathy Eckles and Chesney Floyd.
Hi, my name is May Taylor, and I live in District 9. I don't want to speak for very long, but I just wanted to be here today to say that I do strongly support the code rewrite. I think it's very important that we allow a good variety of housing types in all different parts of the city, because many people's housing needs are not served very well by single-family homes. Many people need or want other options like townhouses, 4 and 6plexes, and ADUs, and we really need to get this done now, there's already been way too much delay. Thank you.
Thank you. No Kathy Eckles, Chesney Floyd, Randy Howard, Mike Gors. Hi, Mike.
Oh, am I up?
You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. I want to start by thanking everyone on the Planning Commission for all of their volunteer time and service to the city and going through a lot of these complex issues. So I've been waiting here for a while. If people this morning got here at around 8:30 or so, then they're able to sign up and maybe speak within the next hour or so. But if you're like me, and you got here maybe a little after nine, and then you made the mistake of chatting with people before you came here to sign up, then, you know, you're going to be here for a few hours, and you wonder if people will listen to you, because everyone's eyes will be glized over, because they've been listening to so many people already. Anyway, my point is that that's kind of like trying to find housing in Austin. If you came here 20 or 30 years ago, maybe you got a house when it was affordable, and whereas nowadays it's more difficult. People talk about preserving existing affordable housing, and to some extent, this varies from neighborhood to neighborhood. But as an example, I saw a property in Brentwood where I live go on the market a couple days ago. It was a little, it was a little over 700 square feet. It was for $350,000. It sold within a day. And for a detached house, that's, I pretty much never see a price that low. So if people, that, you could argue that that's affordable relative to a lot of other things, but most houses that are for sale are significantly more than that. So to me, it really isn't as though we're protecting houses in these neighborhoods that are all that affordable to begin with. And overall, if a lot of people want to live in a neighborhood and there isn't enough housing to go around, then we should keep in mind that, like the house I mentioned, it even, it will, even houses like that will start to become unaffordable. And I also wanted to mention, I've heard that staff has reconsidered the reducing parking regulations and the transition zones. And it's, I agree, it's not ideal to be walking in the street if there are also cars parked there. And ideally, there should be sidewalks, and that's one thing that we all agree on regardless. I'm also concerned that that could have the unintended consequence of causing people to oppose sidewalk construction, because they're worried about, I could see people worrying that the minimum parking regulations will go away, and then they might decide, well, people are afraid of what will happen there, so they might oppose the sidewalk. So I'm, I think that there are a lot of things that need to be worked on in parallel and general. And if we say that we aren't willing to start planning for pedestrians until we have better transit or whatever, then we're potentially, we're continuing to do what we're doing for quite a while, and that, and things take time, and we need to, I would say that we need to, thank you.
Thank you. Joe Gosling. Alex Masters Gosling. Ted Piper. Zoila Vega. Okay. Yes, David Warner and Phyllis. You have three minutes.
Thanks. My name is Phyllis Warner, and we own property near the corner of Oasis and 18th Street. That's in the Panhandle portion of the downtown Austin plan. Both the downtown Austin plan and the land development, the proposed land development code changes severely limit the development potential of the Panhandle portion of the downtown, northwest part of the downtown. The Panhandle is bounded by Martin Luther King on the north, 15th Street on the south, Rio Grande on the west, and San Antonio on the east. Most of the Panhandle is zoned DMC 60, and that, a little bit of it, DMU 120, and the proposed zoning would continue those heights. The Panhandle, however, is outside any Capital View corridor, which makes it one of the few relatively undeveloped parts of downtown that actually could have a lot more density. It's located also near the university, State Office buildings, the Capitol, and the central business district. And it's noteworthy that beginning at Rio Grande, the university, directly across Guadalupe and the university area, buildings can be built up to 220 feet. And actually, there's a big hotel going in that's 12 to 14 stories tall on San Antonio on the opposite side of our boundary. The Panhandle, the Panhandle has been zoned almost entirely for offices and some multifamily residential use for many years. Most of the area was zoned GO in the early 1980s, and at that time, that was the most intense office zoning downtown. During the 90s, the trend started toward DMU 120, and that ought to be allowed to continue, we think. The reason that the downtown Austin plan limited the height and density of future development of the Panhandle was ostensibly to protect the single-family residential portion of Judges Hill. But in fact, that area already is well-protected by topography, by building from existing structures along West Avenue and Rio Grande, most of which are offices and some multifamily residential. They're at least two or three stories tall, and some are significantly taller. Topographically, the highest part of Judges Hill is along West Avenue. The largely residential, single-family part of Judges Hill slopes down toward Lamar, west of West Avenue. The Panhandle, which begins east of, on the east side of Rio Grande, slopes downhill toward an oasis and then continues onto San Antonio. Can I take part of my husband's time? Or does he need to, can we split our?
If you could just wrap up your thoughts, and then we'll go to him.
I actually sent you all this letter.
Thank you.
I'll just finish it. Yeah.
You have three minutes, Mr. Warner.
Right. So, so the Panhandle, this means that a 60-foot-tall building on Oasis at 18th Street where our property is would be at sidewalk level at West Avenue. And it also means that this, where the Panhandle is, is significantly below La Vaca, which rises 30 or 40 feet above that area. And so, given the topography of the area, the existing buffering along Western Rio Grande evidence, building heights of 120 feet or even taller, and the Panhandle would not be visible from or adversely affect the single-family residential part of Judges Hill. Input from Panhandle property owners was largely ignored in the development of the downtown plan. By contrast, the Judges Hill Neighborhood Association, which represents neither Panhandle property owners nor the commercial property owners in Judges Hill, was treated as a Panhandle area stakeholder and permitted to dominate planning for the Panhandle, which severely limit its development potential. The Panhandle is far more in common with the characteristics and goals of the adjacent Uptown Capital District, which is bounded by MLK, 15th Street, San Antonio, and La Vaca, than with those of the Northwest District in the downtown plan. The proposed zoning for most of the Uptown Capital District is CC 120 with some DC. And in fact, the new county courthouses on San Antonio between 17th and 18th Street is going to be well above 120 feet, as is the new hotel, which is going up on San Antonio and MLK. In conclusion, the proposed CC 60 zoning for most of the Panhandle area in the draft LDC is unnecessarily restrictive. The Panhandle's location outside of any Capital View corridor makes it one of the relatively underdeveloped parts of downtown Austin where future development need not be constrained to protect views of the Capitol. Changing the proposed zoning from CC 60 to CC 120 for the Panhandle would allow the recent trend toward 120-foot building heights in the Panhandle to continue, would be consistent with the vision of Imagine Austin and the DAP of fostering the development of more compact, vibrant, livable, densely populated, diverse, and economically and environmentally sustainable downtown with an effective multimodal transportation system. We hope you'll take that, the real potential in this area into account, because really, it would pick up a lot of the needs that are being imposed on neighborhoods today.
Thank you. You have Zoila Vega, Michael Fossum, Kim Vo, Brittany Bays, Nancy Besant at 191. Nancy, you have three minutes. After Nancy, I'm sorry, I have Ann Tucker, but I think she already spoke. Okay. Irene Pickhart or Kyle Hoskins. Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm Nancy Besant. I was born in Austin. I purchased a home in Brentwood in 1980 when the city was desperate to save the inner-city neighborhoods. With city encouragement, I bought center city, near transit, and near work. Old houses require regular maintenance and upgrades. Under Code Next, I will be in a transition zone and must be allowed to do maintenance and make changes. As for Code Next generally, I think we need more time. I urge the Planning Commission, the City Council, and the Travis County Tax Appraisal Department to get together, to create and publish an understandable summary of the relationships of zoning to entitlements to the tax structure. We need that info to do personal planning to cope with these potential changes. I need more time, and if the Planning Commission doesn't know how to work with these other agencies or leadership groups to explain these things to us, so we understand the impact, then I think you all may need more time, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Irene Pickhart.
Good afternoon. My name's Irene Pickhart, and I live in the Brecker Woods neighborhood. It is, it is aptly named. We have many, many trees in the Brecker Woods neighborhood. And I would like to just go through some of the implications for you of trees in a different perspective, and that is on livability and personal health. So this is not the heat island effect, which we know about. This is not the future, but this would be right now if trees were removed. There's just been some research on temperature differences within urban areas. I don't know if any of you ever listen to NPR. I do when I'm driving home from work, and I heard a fascinating series on the effects of different, the effects and what was happening in cities when there was trees and no trees. And one of the, one of the points that was made was that in areas without trees, you have neighborhoods that are hotter. In some cases, they, the research sampled seven different cities around the US. And within those cities, during a summer afternoon, sometimes there was 20 degrees Fahrenheit difference in temperature. And the big difference was whether or not there were access to a nearby large park or if it was a tree-lined street. That was the difference. So with the lack of tree cover in a neighborhood, it makes the neighborhood hotter. You have a higher incidence, this study showed, of heat stroke, chronic obstructive pulmonary disorder, cardiac arrest rose by 80%, high blood pressure more than doubled. And, and one of the researchers said, if you live in an area in cities that's seeing more extreme heat days, but you don't have tree cover to cool down your neighborhood, that can literally be a life and death issue. So, and why is that? Well, we know that weather has a huge impact, significant, on air quality. And specifically, we have increased VOCs.
Do you have your final thoughts?
My final thought is, we keep hearing that the city of Austin has a tremendous ordinance to protect trees. I have the research for it in these slides. Do you know what percentage, would you be willing to guess what percentage of trees within the city of Austin are protected trees? Under 3%. Under 3%. And you still can remove protected trees, as you know. You just need an arborist to say, they're a hackberry or some other thing. But under 3% are protected, and we are really, I live, I'm in a, I live in a part of the neighborhood that's transitioned.
Ms. Pickhart, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. No trees.
Commissioner Flores?
Yes.
Do we need to extend time?
We don't? No.
Okay, thanks.
We're going to keep going. John Mitchell. George Mitchell. We have Kevin Quist. All right, Kevin. And then if Kristen Phillips is here, or Paul Kiper to come up.
Excuse me, is there a, we're going to find out if they missed. I thought I was in the 170s.
What is your name?
Gail Rees.
I wasn't one time.
No, but we did say, the chair said at the beginning, that if you were not in the room and your name was called, you'd have to be, I don't see your name, ma'am, on the...
I've been here since 9:00.
What was your number?
What was your number?
170s. When I signed up, I said, where are you now? He said, oh, we're over 170.
I think Oi Whaley is 178. He's been sitting out there.
Those are the only names you have on the list, the ones you just said?
Yeah.
Let's find out where we are.
Do you want me to look through while you do?
Yeah.
Has somebody to continue on?
Yeah, let's, let's continue with...
What's her name?
Kevin Quist. What was your name again, ma'am?
Gail Rees.
Gail Rees. I did not see that on there.
We're going to look through.
Thanks. Kevin? Yeah?
Fast one, please.
Oh.
Gail, I'm sorry, your number is 205. You're on the subsequent pages. Thanks.
That's your all-passed one, right?
Yeah. There we go. Go ahead, Kevin. Thank you.
All right. So, I'm a UT civil engineering student, and I haven't looked at the code in depth or anything, but as I understand it, it's going to be allowing things like fourplexes and sixplexes, and I think this is a good thing. These are dense homes, they're located in the central city, and they would allow sustainable walkable lifestyles, and this is something that's very important to me, and I think very important to a generation. very important to a generation with plans for a serious public transit system here in Austin, Project Connect 2020. We can't not have land use to match this. We can't have zoning that's only single-family. We need to have transition zones and the transition corridors that are currently in this code. And I would love to see Austin grow in a way, in a sustainable way, with walkable lifestyles as opposed to sprawling. Moreover, I think that walkable density is beautiful. I love the vitality I feel in places like London, Brooklyn, Portland, or Tokyo, and I would love to increase the amount of places where we can feel civically connected with each other. Okay, and this is a fourplex that I'm talking about. Which button do I press? Right? It's not working. Anyway, that's a sixplex. I think these things are very nice and aesthetic. This is a street in London where you can feel very energized and revitalized, a residential street in Brooklyn, could be Hyde Park, a nice little commercial center in Portland, which could be that commercial center in Hyde Park, just with more people. And then this is a street in Tokyo. So the final thing I wanted to mention was the timing of this code. I personally believe we need to take action now. This code rewrite has been going on for a decade, and honestly, I'm not sure if we can all be satisfied with one code. And the more we wait, we prohibit density that most of us in this room like, and we also push people into environmentally degradating sprawl each year we wait. I'm happy with the code, and let's get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristen Phillips and Paul Kiper. Eric Garcia. Okay, after Roy, we've got Gail Reese, and if you would wait at the other podium so you can be ready to speak. And then Ryan Natividad. Go ahead, Mr. Whaley. You'll have three minutes.
Howdy, y'all. My name's Roy Whaley. I've been an environmental political activist here in Austin for over 30 years now. I know what y'all are thinking. 30 years? My gosh, how? He looks so young. Well, thank you for the compliment. I appreciate that. But I was born an environmentalist. When you grow up farming or a son of a farmer and rancher in western Williamson County on the confluence of the North San Gabriel River and Clear Creek, you're just an environmentalist by birth. And I've been an environmental activist here for a long time. And that's what I really want to talk about is I, I'm not necessarily opposed to the code. I'm not opposed to change. We need to change, but we need to slow down and think it through. We've been doing this for so long, I don't remember the actual date, but I think it was in 2012 when the consultants first came in. They asked David Foster from Clean Water Action and Bill Bunch from Save Our Springs and me, at the time I was the representative for the local Sierra Club. I don't speak for Sierra Club now, I'm speaking as an individual. But at that time, we were told that it's, the plan is going to start with environmental protection. That's the first thing we're going to do, is protect the environment. And that will also set aside the park space right away, and then we'll fill in the rest of the code around that. Part of that means dealing with the floodwaters that could be coming from the changes that we already have. Now, that was a great plan to me, also that there wouldn't be future arguments before council about, well, we bought this, but we actually want to build this. Everything would be set in stone, and everyone would know, neighborhoods and developers alike would know what the code meant. When that sprouted wings and flew away, I don't know, but that vision went away quite a while ago. I think it is very important to look at as we densify, to go back to the old Cat Stevens song, Where Did the Children Play? We've got to, and Where Did the Dogs Poop? Well, he didn't say that, but we've got to have more park space to make up for this density, to give people a place to get outside, to give children playgrounds as we densify the corridors. I'm not anti-density. I am anti-stupidity, though. So I don't think we've been approaching this in a smart way. We've already sent Code Next scurrying to the shadows. Now we've brought it back as the land development code rewrite. It's the same thing with a different name, same bad taste, same poor price, but a new package. Let's slow down, let's get this right, let's protect parks, let's give more open space that will also help us deal with the floodwaters by increasing impervious cover. Let's do stormwater capture and reuse on site so that we don't continue to flood the neighbors and the displacement that East Austin is already and has been experiencing and that will only get worse, especially along Little Walnut Creek. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whaley.
Sorry to interrupt you all before, I just wanted to make sure I was still on the list. I'm Gail Reese. I live at 4703 Evans Avenue, and that is North Hyde Park and particularly Patterson Heights. That is one block east of Duval. I bought that house when I made $8 an hour in 1978, and I think my husband made $5 an hour then. We had to save every penny and get our income tax return back to afford that house, but we did. We were scared to death of $273 payment. I am 69 years old next month. In the four years I've had my senior tax deferral or discount, 50% of it has disappeared in taxes increases, and I protest my taxes every year and have for 30 years. I live in a two-bedroom, one-bath, and my washer and dryer is in my kitchen, so I don't feel like I am white, unable, or whatever, you know. I'm not a Mercedes-driving mansion living person, okay? My neighborhood has three, my street has three houses on my side and eight houses on the other side. Within touchpoint of my house, two across the street and one next to me, I have 13 rental students. You cannot park on my street at night or on weekends. We have no sidewalks. Kids ride their bikes and walk down the middle of the street. I walk my dog, and everybody else walks their dog down the middle of the street. My garage now floods from uphill building from me, everybody's extra bedroom and bathroom. 50% of my garage has water running through it now. And yet the city says my house is worth $450,000, or the lot is worth $360,000, and every year they double the value of my house and I get it knocked back down because it is basically a 2-1 with no extra space and no extra bells and whistles. I am speaking for my two other neighbors who came down here with me at 9:00, but they had other things to do. I've been involved with Hyde Park Neighborhood Association. Three months ago, I heard, or the beginning of June, which is more than three months ago, I heard about the code. I went to the Neighborhood Association meeting that Kronk spoke at, and Kathy Tovo was there. And from what I hear, it doesn't sound like much has changed since then, or maybe we haven't been allowed to give input that you all have had time to consider. In my little neighborhood, I'm very concerned about the utilities, the water system, the gas pipes, the sewer system. You cannot drive a garbage truck down the street with two cars parked. They have to stand and honk their horn until they can get through. We're one block off of Duval, and Duval is a 30-block street mostly occupied by students on the buses. I'd love to go back to it, every 20-minute bus, and maybe we wouldn't be called a thoroughfare or within three lots of a thoroughfare.
Final thoughts, please. Thank you.
I'd like to die in my house and not have to sell out because I'm surrounded by fourplexes. We have neighborhoods of children, families, seniors, and we will be disowned.
Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
Ryan Natividad. Stuart Hirsch. We did get his thoughts here. Phil Thomas. And you're donating time to Carol Stahl?
Philip Hirsch.
The other way around.
Oh, Carol, you're donating your time to Phil. So you all have six minutes. And after Phil, Jim Sander, and then Larry Walter. Walter. Thank you.
Can't believe I outlasted Stuart Harry Hirsch.
He left his thoughts with us.
I'm Philip Thomas. I live in Council District 3. I lived in Austin for 36 years, my wife for 46 years, and we love this city. We've embraced a lot of change over the years, and most of it we've simply just liked. The city has spent a lot on a rezoning effort, and yet it may not match the rhetoric of what it hopes to accomplish. Let's take a look at a few things. It has not simplified the code. Instead, this weighty plan seeks to increase density, height, FARs, parking exemptions, all with unknown consequences. Instead of limiting the size of McMansions, it proposes allowing larger building envelopes that will encourage yet bigger homes. Instead of protecting the environment, the proposed LDC adds impervious cover, ups the FAR, and it's going to continue sprawl, although this time it will be the low and middle-income sprawl of people seeking affordable homes in stable communities outside of Austin. Instead of providing affordable housing, as proponents proclaim, the rezone may at best achieve about 14% of the city's strategic affordable housing goals. It also does not take into account infrastructure, which we all, which we all can see the results of here in traffic, water, geyser issues, fires, et cetera. It's time to ask, who benefits from the land development rewrite? Or should we call it the land redevelopment rewrite? Who benefits? Who are we building for? It benefits the speculators, who will sell to the developers, who will develop more market rate units due to the presence of the fee and loom. It benefits those who can afford to redevelop their lots. It benefits newcomers with high incomes and windfall incomes from selling their homes elsewhere. It benefits taxing entities due to the upzoning and upvaluing aspects of the plan. It benefits civic entities with land that can be sold, such as AISD, whose closure and consolidation policy proves it. So if those entities benefit, who doesn't? It doesn't help most of the people that have lived here, built and maintained this city whose quirky character and talents contributed to the local charm but who lack investment funds. It doesn't benefit those who do not want to redevelop their communities. It does not benefit those who wish to age in place and cannot afford to build bigger or more houses on their lot. It does not benefit renters who must face rising costs due to increased property values, a direct result of increased density. It does not benefit local community schools because families are economically pushed out and newcomers don't have kids or are merely investors. It does not benefit, finally, struggling small businesses along the transit corridors, businesses that can't afford to rent a mixed-use facility or pay the higher taxes on the land. Existing ground-floor retail is struggling in East Austin with occupancy rates as it is. If you drive along Peternalis and you look at the south side of the street where the Peternalis mixed-use development is, 50% of the storefronts are vacant. This is not living up to its promise. But more importantly, it's time we really listen to the grassroots community neighborhood groups, the real ones. It's time residents took back the influence that we have relegated to the politicians, the staffers, and by extension, the land development sector. It's time the people most affected by this proposed plan once again have a voice. And the effort does not need to cost $11 million for consulting and outreach, far from it. The communities already did it for free with their neighborhood plans, all enshrined by the city. It's time to update those plans, but with grassroots participation. What we need is a fair, even-handed, measured plan that envisions a truly sustainable path that honors the past while embracing the future. Thank you for your time and service on this Saturday.
Thank you. Jim Sander? And then Larry, lives on Cullen Avenue, I believe it's Walter.
How are y'all?
You've got three minutes.
Jim Sander, longtime Austinite since '72. I've owned a house on the east side since '96, the Holly Street, Holly neighborhood. I've lived all over town growing up, my dad's in the Air Force, and we bounced around a lot, but managed a lot about my address so I can go to Matthews, O'Henry, and Austin High. That was a benefit, and got to be a little rug rat around Armored Hill World Headquarters. Had a great time here. I love Austin, love the diversity. Worked in tech since '92, tandem up there in North Austin, and IBM, now the domain. Kind of new to this fray. That was about three or four weeks ago. I thought Code Next was dead, then bouncing through our neighborhood forum, discussion group, I see there's a lively interchange between pro and anti-LDC folks, and I thought I'd get involved. And I'm pretty ignorant about a lot of what's going on right now, but got caught up to speed today. I think a lot of things I noticed in our discussions and the forum, let me try to catch up here my notes, I'm not a speaker, but my takeaway is that this proposal is going through fast and furious without any transparency or discussion. It seems like a lot of folks are unaware of what this code means, what it'll do, the intention. I understand real estate investments are all the rage, so it's only natural to assume that the driver for this is speculative. So folks are naturally going to push back, and I think that is the big driver for a lot of anti-LDC movement. Some of the arguments I've heard so far, you know, it's beneficial for transit, less carbon emissions, the walkability, that's all fine and good. The walkability part, I kind of question, being in the high-tech sector, I would imagine that would benefit a lot of the high-tech folks working here downtown, or already downtown, so yes, less transit, less carbon footprint, but the working-class folks actually do most of the city services required, still won't be able to live in downtown. They won't be able to afford it. I think I'm going to run out of time, but hurry up. Large tax base. I'm no math surgeon, but shouldn't our budget be covered by the existing tax base unless the city's borrowing against some prospective growth? That just doesn't make sense to me. And just see what else. Move on down here. I wanted to go on about how the pro-LDC folks have been kind of ugly on the forums. Yeah, it's, you know, I've had one, well, shoot. This is fun, I'm going to do this again.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, folks.
I'm going to try one more time. Larry Walter on Cullen Avenue. Okay, Bill, can't read the name, on 203 West 32nd Street?
That's me.
All right. And then after Bill, we'll have Dr. Peter Anderson, and then Tina Barrett. You have three minutes, sir.
My name's Bill Bednar.
My name's Bill Bednar, and I'm a resident of the North University Neighborhood Association. I've been a resident of Austin for over fifty years. And I've seen an awful lot of back and forth about zoning and density. I've got three points I'd like to make to you. First, as a general one, and it's been alluded to by several speakers already, and that is that this current land code, development code revision is simply Codex Redux. Naming it something else hasn't changed the fact that it is a woefully flawed process and a woefully flawed piece of legal substance, and it needs to be junked, and we need to start over. Two specific points. Well, while I'm still on the general point, I agree with everything that's been said against this revision. I think it's very, very bad for Austin, and we need to revisit this whole process. Slow it down and do it right. But my specific concern are with NCCD ordinances in local historic districts. Several years ago, back in two thousand and four, the neighborhood spent an awful lot of money getting an awful lot of professional, very good professional help, and the cooperation of six or seven other neighborhood groups in planning an NCCD ordinance that was enacted for the North University Neighborhood Association. That ordinance is now being disregarded. In fact, it's been disregarded since it was enacted. The city constantly, every time we had a demolition come up, would not even know that we even had it. But it's very meticulous, it's the kind of planning process that should have happened with Codex. And those NCCDs, those carefully planned neighborhood plans that were done by the neighborhoods themselves, need to be exempted from this overall process and preserved. Likewise with historic districts. Aldrich Place was voted in just a little over two and a half years ago by an eight-to-three vote on the city council. We're now facing a similar vote to approve a transition zone that essentially do away with it. Historic districts, if we're going to have them, let's make them historic. Historic means that you preserve them, that you don't change them, and that you keep the flavor of that neighborhood. That needs to be part of this process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Anderson?
No, I'm going to be short.
Okay. And then Tina Barrett.
Well, I've been sitting here for a number of hours, not as long as you have. And I've been listening, and I've been watching, been watching you. And I'm encouraged, because I can see your attention. You are listening too. And that gives me encouragement, so thank you very much. We have seen a diversity of opinion today, both for and against. And I guess what I want to say is, nothing is ever black or white. We never have either or or. This is not a digital decision, okay? This is an old-school judgmental decision that requires common sense. It requires your common sense, and this is your reputation at stake. I know that each and every one of you want to do the best for Austin. I know you do. And the speakers that we heard today, they come from different points of view, but they all want, as they see it, the best for Austin. Now, as an economist, I want to tell you who the "you" would be, who the "you" would be to tear down a historic home and take that quarter of an acre and develop it into multiple units, would be my clients. I work, I'm a consulting economist. I work for real estate developers, I work for home builders. They would be very happy to do it. I do not think for one second that rents will be lower on comparable units in the future than today. So I want to just point out that not only am I a consulting economist to real estate developers, business decision-makers, makers of building materials and all of that, I'm also a finance teacher, okay? I'm also a finance teacher, and I know the textbooks don't always get it right. That's why we had a financial crisis, all right? Now, when it comes to density, the textbooks all say density makes a lot of sense, okay? That is quick thinking. That is your intuitive quick thinking, it's what the textbooks say. It's more complicated than that. It requires judgment, it requires street smarts. And basically, I am a kind of a real-world economist, and what I'm saying is there's a lot of downside to density and unintended consequences. One more comment. When it comes to history, what makes Austin? What makes Austin? It's Austin's history. Should people tear down historic homes? And do we forget history? Austin has a history. I'll just support what Bill Bednar just said. We need historical homes and historical districts and historical communities in Austin. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Tina Barrett, and then we have Shannon Hicks.
I thank you for doing this and sitting here and listening to what I'm sure you've heard many times over for years now, but we'll keep trying. As a homeowner for twenty years in a central Austin neighborhood, Rosedale, I've heard my fair share of fear-mongering from CNC, ANC, and neighborhood preservationists. Here's some of what I've heard. Our neighborhood character will be destroyed, and sometimes this destruction is overnight. What does preserving neighborhood character even mean? Isn't it odd that this has been a battle cry for decades, even as neighborhoods have evolved greatly? Doesn't it sound like things are great now, or in the past, and we have to keep or make it great again? Does it mean that duplexes or fourplexes are ugly, or the people who want to live in them have less worth? Shouldn't neighborhood character simply mean that we welcome neighbors of all income levels, family types, races, genders, and everything in between? I want to live in a neighborhood where we preserve the ability of those from all walks of life to enjoy what my neighborhood has to offer. What else is there to preserve? Another example, perfectly affordable homes will get thrown into the landfill. More hypocrisy. It's often claimed that the new land development code will remove all the currently affordable housing stock in older neighborhoods. This supposedly affordable housing stock is affordable often because it's nearly unlivable. Many of these houses were built in the thirties, forties, and fifties. They may have old aluminum wiring, lead paint, asbestos siding, no insulation, crumbling foundations, dilapidated roofing, no AC, and so on. Someone might be able to afford buying it, but to live in it would cost tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars in repair, making the name Affordable Housing Stock a bit of a joke. In fact, the home across the street from Councilmember Poole sold for five hundred and thirty-five thousand before any renovations. How that's affordable to begin with is bizarre to me. And sold for over a million dollars after the renovations. If, however, six units could have been built on that lot, to today's standards, it should be obvious that they would likely be even cheaper than the old home that was there before. To assume that if lower-income families want to move into the wealthy central Austin neighborhoods, they should just settle for unsafe, unsanitary, terribly inefficient homes is just plain wrong. Finally, I believe that many of my Rosedale neighborhoods understand how global warming is destroying our planet, yet many of those same neighbors would say to newcomers, just move out to the suburbs so you don't destroy my neighborhood character. This is the kind of cognitive dissonance I'm dismayed at hearing from my thoughtful, science-loving, progressive neighbors. Preventing more people from a broad range of incomes to live in a broad range of housing types in our central Austin neighborhoods will contribute directly to the problems of global warming. We, as a city, cannot ignore the sprawling suburbs radiating all around us, and we must do everything we can to minimize them. Building more density and missing middle housing in transition zones does just this while allowing us to welcome a much more diverse community of people into our historically neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon Hicks. Next, Andy Hickey. Ricardo Terullos Bonilla. After Ricardo is Joan Paolo Conley.
Okay, so we start now?
Yes, go ahead.
Where do I count the minutes? Oh, here? Oh, okay. Yes, I've been in Austin about sixteen years, I'm originally from Mexico. I've had a calling, and for the last sixteen years that I've been here, I've been teaching science at Austin AISD, basically alternative education campuses like Connor Betts and places like ALC, Phoenix House and all that. And on the side, I would write. My passion was for the crisis of civilization, the macro, the macro plan, but I was living in the micro. I mean, I was a teacher, okay? Having to pay mortgage and the usual stuff. And finally, I retired in just in January of this year, so now I have time, and I came up with some conclusions. So I came up with a conclusion, I studied a problem, I identified what the problem is, and I came up with a solution, which is the most important thing, that's why I'm here, basically. I've tried it a few times before to get on the public scenery, but I didn't have the complete solution nor focus on the problem completely. Now I do. The thing is that I've been to various meetings, and all leads point in the same direction, okay? Whether you're talking about homelessness, or we're talking about shooters, or we're talking about, you know, housing or whatever, they all point at the same thing, which is education. And by education, I don't mean smaller classrooms, or paying more teachers, or more technology. By education, I mean, at the crisis of civilization is that we are transmitting certain values, which is called dualism, okay? Philosophy is called dualism, which means either-or mentality. And the either-or mentality, we see it every day on the diets, they're called issues, okay? And issues are what people, it's what divides people, that's why it's called dualism, okay? Because on what side of the issue are you on? Everybody's on dualism. The problem, Yvette, is that it's unhinging the minds of our children. Of course, those children with time, you know, that's us adults, okay? So the problem is that we go to school to learn, we go to school to be taught to think correctly, but if it's done wrong, then we are taught to think incorrectly, and that is wrong, okay? And the problem is that we keep kicking, we come up with this, which figuratively I call a Medusa approach. Medusa means, you know, you cut the problem, but you're cutting the manifestations, and you fix the problem, half-fix it and half-make it worse, but you kick it down the line, it's somebody else's problem down the line. And that problem keeps growing with time, and the issues we're having here are going to be our children's issues in ten years from now. So I have a proposal, and I have, with the proposal, I took about eight books to write, and right now, I'm making it more simple. So right now, I have it on YouTube, on YouTube channel, and I'm going to pass everybody of you. So I recommend that you take this course on YouTube, okay, it's free, before you take any decisions, because otherwise, you're going to mess it up, just like the guys on homelessness and everybody else.
Thank you. Joan Paolo Conley? What's your first name, if you could say it for me?
Joan Paolo.
Joan Paolo. Thank you.
I'm here with the Austin Justice Coalition, and we've already emailed you.
Okay.
Our official recommendations, but I wanted to, yeah.
And just to be ready, we have Kendra Garrett, and then Larissa Radenoy.
Yeah, our team.
Radenoy, I'm sorry.
So I'm passing around a copy of our official positions.
Thank you all for taking the time to listen to the community on this, and I wanted to say that Austin Justice Coalition is starting a new initiative called the Complete Communities Initiative. And the Complete Communities Initiative is centered around two key questions. One is, how can we undo the legacy of systemic racism that has defined the housing landscape in Austin for so long? And the second question is, how can we find opportunities to heal as a community? So as we look at those two key questions and look at the land development code, we're trying to find ways to open a conversation with the entire city about these issues, right? How can we undo this legacy of segregation? So the Austin Justice Coalition does not see the land development code as a solution to all the housing inequities in Austin. It alone will not address the scale of the need for affordable housing or the many ways a long history of racism has shaped our communities. We do, however, see an opportunity to face our historic inequities and approach the future from a place of collective honesty, and that's what we're here to champion today, a place of collective honesty. So our recommendations include moving transition zones. We are not opposed to transition zones. We like transition zones, we see them as important parts in the plan for a growing community. However, we call on the city to take very seriously the findings of UT's Uprooted Report, and to treat the areas that have been marked as vulnerable and most vulnerable to displacement, to treat those areas, take that report seriously and treat those areas with caution. So we recommend moving all transition zones out of those areas and placing them in high-opportunity areas. And we would like to ask the city to also question why certain perfectly accessible, well-established corridors were not deemed worthy of receiving transition zones, while many very vulnerable corridors on the east side that have been marked in some of the most sensitive to displacement communities, those areas were deemed vulnerable of receiving transition zones. We also are very concerned about the way that the affordable housing requirements and the density program function. Right now, we see them as encouraging displacement, particularly in Riverside and in other vulnerable communities, but we can also think of the affordable units requirement as a tool to stimulate development in areas that won't create displacement. So we recommend to the city a higher requirement of affordable units in the density bonus for places that have been marked as vulnerable by the UT report, while we also are okay with a lower requirement as a kind of extra entitlement, because we do believe that we need to create space for more people in Austin, provided that that space is created in places that are not already vulnerable to displacement, according to the UT report that was paid for by the city. Now, we're aware of the fact that the demographics have already changed in some ways. The UT report was from two thousand and sixteen, but we think it's gotten worse, and so we ask the city to take those findings very seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Kendra Garrett?
Hi. Sorry, my first time. My name is Kendra Garrett, and I'm a member of the Austin Justice Coalition, and I also co-lead the Complete Communities Initiative with my co-lead, John Paolo. And to echo his sentiments, we believe that the land development code is a key opportunity to have an open, honest discussion about the legacy of segregation in our city. And so our third recommendation is the elimination of neighborhood conservation combining districts. These districts are zoning overlays that override the city's development designation for these neighborhoods, allowing them to establish their own standards for community development in these districts. And so historically, not all, but some of these districts were created to have neighborhoods only of white residents, right? Directly barring communities of color of accessing and living in these community spaces. Today, these districts represent about over nine hundred acres of desirable real estate that are within five miles of the Austin Business Central District. And so by the elimination of these districts, you allow communities of color and working families to have access and live in these districts. The existence of these, the continued existence of these districts propagates the legacy of segregation that was defined by the city in the nineteen twenty-eight master plan. And our final recommendation at the end of that is the creation of corridors of equitable opportunity. This idea is adapted from the Twin Cities. They did an initiative called Corridors of Opportunity, so we're going to do a little play on words of that, but the goal was to engage communities of color and lower-income residents as a way to make more equitable transit-oriented development within those two cities. And so for, to be adapted to Austin, we suggest that these districts, these corridors, be directed to communities that directly forced black and brown residents to move or intentionally barred them from barred them from accessing and living in these spaces through the direct discrimination of public and private actors. So increasing housing and small business opportunities in these neighborhoods that are focused for communities of color is a way to contribute to the Austin Strategic Blueprint, Housing Blueprint, and for the, to be aligned with Austin's imagination, Imagine Comprehensive Plan. Too often, we feel like black and brown communities are asked to pay the heavy price in order to maintain the comfort of white residents. If we're going to challenge the racist legacies of the city, we have to redefine how we plan our communities. So as long as we continue to protect those that are protected and sacrifice those that have already sacrificed, we will no longer, we cannot truly consider ourselves a just and equitable city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Larissa Rodanov, and then Olivia Ott.
I believe Larissa's not here today.
What, are you Olivia?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm Olivia. I'm with the Austin Justice Coalition. I'm going to expand upon JP's point about changing the requirements around the city Affordable Housing Density Bonus Program. So currently, the percentage of affordable housing units required by the city's density program creates a disproportionate incentive to develop in vulnerable areas. The downtown density bonus program requires 15% of affordable housing units in development to take advantage of the program's entitlements in downtown. As one moves away from the city center, the affordable unit requirement decreases to 3%, 3 to 5%. In East Austin neighborhoods, a developer is not required to provide a substantial number of affordable units in order to serve the neighborhoods, the neighborhoods' current population. This requirement does not provide a pathway for the working-class families to afford neighborhoods closer to their jobs, schools, or other select communities. Equitability requires for us to correct historical injustices and balance the scales. We recommend that a percentage of the affordable units required by the density bonus should be in higher, higher-end areas that are mapped as vulnerable to displacement, and lower in areas that do not create displacement. In short, when a developer is not required to add a large portion of affordable units in an area that's already vulnerable to displacement, the people who are going to come into that neighborhood are going to be higher-income people and going to displace the low-income people who are currently living there. Property tax rates will go up, which will then reinforce this cycle. So in areas that we've already mapped as being vulnerable, we need to make sure that the people who live there are given a path to stay there, and the people who are in those communities who've already been displaced have a path to get back. Thank you.
Thank you. Shane Zossen?
Johnson.
Johnson, oh. And then Warren Berkeley and Chaz Moore. You have three minutes.
All right. Everyone, I'm Shane Johnson, he/him pronouns, and I currently live in District Three. First of all, I wanted to sort of take a step back to a maybe 10,000-foot view and just really emphasize and point out that this process has been extremely white today. I hope most of you have noticed that the vast majority of speakers have been white, and even the majority of you on the dais are white, and so, and I'm also a member of Austin Justice Coalition, so when communities of color and black folks come out and saying, you know, we need a little more representation and to be listened to, like this is, clearly there's some problems throughout the whole process, and there needs to be some equity in terms of which policy ideas are emphasized, particularly about the Eastern Crescent and gentrification. So I'll just go back real fast and reiterate a few points that JP said, Joan Paulo. So again, we want you to take very seriously the UT Uprooted Study or Report, and we're not against transition zones in themselves, but the current transition areas, many of them have been disproportionately marked, or delineated on the east side in areas that were marked vulnerable by the UT Uprooted Study. Some of these include Montopolis Drive, East St. John's Avenue, and East Runberg. And so, really, in order to alleviate some of that pressure off of East Austin, transition, some of the transition zones need to be moved out of the most vulnerable areas to the west side, to more western Austin or central Austin. And some corridors could be, or could include Spice Wood Springs Road, Southwest Parkway, Far West Boulevard, and Exposition Boulevard. So we just encourage y'all to use that equity lens when you're looking at where these transition zones are and who's being transitioned, really. Otherwise, you know, if you, if the process continues, and like several folks said, the legacy of racism is that people of color, every year when they come out to city council or planning commissions or whatever commissions, put out policy ideas that help ourselves and then we aren't listened to. So the only way to alleviate that or fix that is to listen to the people who are most directly impacted and who thus have the solutions themselves, so that we can minimize the displacement of people of color and make our city more equitable, particularly in accordance with our own equity principles laid out in our own strategic plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Warren Berkeley?
Yeah.
And then Chaz Moore? You have three minutes, Warren.
Warren Berkeley with Austin Justice Coalition. I wanted to reiterate on establishing corridors of equitable opportunity. We recommend a joint effort with, between the Neighborhood Housing and Community Development Department and the Equity Office to do this. The idea stems from an initiative in the Twin Cities whose goal was to establish two kinds of equitable change. Equitable transit-oriented development and system-level change in how transit-related planning and development are done. Corridors of equitable opportunity should target existing corridors located in specific city neighborhoods, like NCCDs, where people of color were either forced or barred access due to discriminatory actions or artificially inflating property values by public and private actors. We believe we should be increasing housing stock in these neighborhoods with a mix of market-affordable and deeply affordable units at 35% MFI or below. This will contribute to the goal set forth in the Austin Strategic Housing Blueprint. And communities located west of 35 should strive to achieve the economic and cultural diversity envisioned as part of the Imagine Austin Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you. Chaz Moore? And then we have Lucy Beg and Kimberly Lansky. You have three minutes.
All right. Chaz Moore, Executive Director and founder of the Austin Justice Coalition, just really here to support Joan Paulo and Kendra and the rest of the AJC team with the work they're doing when it comes to the Land Development, uh, Land Development Code. I sat there and I realized that JP wanted me to kind of like come clean up pitch, but I think they just pitched the perfect game. I think they made it very clear what we support and things we look forward to working with you all when it comes to Land Development Code. So a couple of quick things, and I'll get out of here, because it's Saturday, and I'm a firm believer that Saturdays are meant for college football and happy hour and beer. So thank you all for your service and time, but I'm going to try to give you as much time back as I can. But we mainly want to represent and give you, uh, give you all the visual, the visualization that people under 50, people of color, and people that don't own houses, that are renters, also care about the Land Development Code. And we are not going to be like many people that come in today and complain one-off. We look forward to working with you all as much as we can throughout the process. We also know that this is not just a planning commission thing. This is a city council, city manager, Board of Adjustments type of thing, too. So we look forward to being a voice and playing a role in as much as that as we possibly can. We also understand that you all did not create the racist burdens that the 1928 and all the other plans did, but we also understand that you all have a unique opportunity to undo as much as you can. And we also understand that, you know, in Austin, if we could come up with the best policies and procedures when it comes to housing, we could, but we also at AJC understand state and federal laws and policies and how restricted to do, are restricted in ways that we may want to achieve things. So I say, I would say, we are willing to work with you all as much as we can, look forward to reaching out to the few, I know a few faces up here, but the other faces we want to get to know, too. Yeah, and since this is a public record, I have to say, go Strohs.
Thank you. Lucy Beg? Is Lucy here? Kimberly Lansky? Brendan Sheehan? Blake Thompson? Marjorie Gordon? Connor McLaughlin? Oh, Jessica Ely, yes. And then Candy Fox and Brian Potite? Ms. Ely? I'm sorry?
I think I might be Marjorie.
Oh, are you Marjorie?
Yes, I'm Marjorie.
I'm sorry, okay. Marjorie, and then Jessica Ely. Okay, you have three minutes, ma'am.
Hi. I have a reputation of being Mrs. Weiner, but I feel like I've earned that because I do express my voice. I am concerned, I have several concerns. I live right on a transition zone. I'm the next one in. And I know from many years of being on this, being in this city and being in other cities, that when developers come in, they tend to put up products that may not be the best quality, because they don't really care, they have no commitment to the extensive long-term keeping of those, or maintenance of those properties. And what's been happening, like in Vancouver, is downtown properties, many of them have been bought by outside investors, Asians primarily, who do, who build in for second homes or for corporate visitation, for people in their companies who want, who visit Vancouver. Many of those remain empty throughout the year, yet they're out of reach for the Vancouver I'm wondering why the lots, many of them very deep and not surrounded by residential neighborhoods on North Burnett, north of Anderson, all the way up to Domain, have not been considered for these high-rise and for development. They right, they are right along the transportation corridor. They, right now, house abandoned buildings and are graffiti magnets, eyesores, to the community and all of Burnett Road. Why haven't they been considered instead of digging into the neighborhoods such as I think there's an equality issue, and I hear what the former speakers right before me said, and, but I also think there's an equality issue in that I don't see a lot of development happening west of MOPAC. I am an academic language therapist and privately teach students in that area all of the time. Those lots are at least double the size of mine, and yet I'm in one of the most dense areas of the city. It doesn't seem that they have been, that area, which is a lot of land, has been considered, and I'm wondering why not? I am concerned about the quality of my neighborhood, as the people from the co-ops were saying. One of the, one of the signs of happiness is being, interacting with others. When your neighborhood is gone, you don't know the people that are renting in the many unit condos near you. Some of them rented, some of them, they don't have the incentive to preserve. They're not out there doing it's my park day. They're not having the holiday parties like we have in our neighborhood where we collect donations for safe. They're not having the 30-year dinner club where we get together and get to know our neighbors.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thanks for giving up your Saturday for this. I really appreciate
Yes, Jessica Ely? You have three minutes. You can just hand them over. Thank you. And then Candy Fox and Sarah Madera?
Candy's not able to be here. Wait. Yeah, no.
Okay. Thank you.
She's my co-chair for the Go Valley Neighborhood Association. We've been looking at the trans, the, first of all, more time would be great. You guys have been hearing that a bunch. I just wanted to focus in on two areas, specifically Go Valley Avenue, and this proposal is considered a transit corridor, and I think that's a mistake. It divides our neighborhood. We have our traditional neighborhood plan that we've been fighting for 20 years to have a pocket of single-family housing, and by making Go Valley Avenue a transit corridor, you guys know what that means. There's a lot of knock-on benefits, knock-on implications with that designation. You have R4 housing. We very much oppose having our neighborhood literally divided in half, and would like to see that remain R2. That being said, we are not opposed to R4 housing. We especially like the ability of a density bonus with an R4, and our neighborhood's weird. We have a lot of strangely deep lots. We, but we've been handling it on a piece-by-piece basis. We work a lot with Guadalupe Neighborhood Development Corporation. They're building their project on Father's Inote Street in our neighborhood. They're looking at other projects. We'd like to save those R4 designations for when we can get an affordable unit and not just have this blanket automatic, automatically kick in. The other thing I wanted to make you aware of is a lot of our neighbors are not homesteaded, even though it is their home. They should be. This is something we work on education-wise at each of our meetings, but this kind of, you've heard other speakers acknowledge it, we are in a vulnerable zone. We are not opposed to density. We will keep adding density where we see it appropriate, and we would like the ability to do that. You've got the information in the letter. I'll keep it short. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sarah Madera? Luisa Holberman? Catherine Tushik? Oh, I'm sorry. What was your name? Mike, okay.
Yeah. My name is Mike White, and I live in the Brentwood neighborhood. I'm for more density of all uses and housing types and support the update to the Land Use Code, primarily to increase housing supply and lessen the rate at which housing appreciates, so my fellow millennials and entire generation will have a chance to participate in the purchase of their homes, and so I can walk to meet my everyday needs. I firmly believe today's new housing is tomorrow's affordable housing. We wouldn't have current affordable housing stock if they didn't build it 30, 40 years ago, so we need to build more housing now, so there's more older affordable housing stock in the future for other generations. A comment on FARs, if we increase the FAR, which I believe this man use code does, on most parcels owned for two units, then we just will make more bigger, more expensive units. So if we increase the FAR, people should be able to build three units on those lots, so people can build smaller, less expensive units. Also, a comment on neighborhood commercial, we should allow for an increase in retail, office, and commercial uses along secondary arteries such as North Loop and Houston Avenue and other streets that allow residents the option to walk without having to walk down large pedestrian unfriendly boulevards such as Burnett and Lamar. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Tushik?
Yes. So I'm Catherine Tuchek, and thank you very much for having this meeting. I'm a 23-year resident in Blackland neighborhood. We are four streets wide and between two transit corridors. Mainor Road is a two-lane road with bike lanes and buses every 15 minutes, and MLK is a four-lane road with bus service. Mainor is zoned Main Street 2B, while the larger MLK has lesser zoning except on two blocks. The next streets in are RM1, and then the next block off Mainor is R4, but not on MLK. Left is 1.5 blocks of R2. The PC proposed amendment that upzones small swathes of neighborhoods between the transit corridors would be our entire neighborhood. Some neighborhoods are deep and wide, but ours isn't. So I'm asking, why is the heavy upzoning despite the corridors considering the existing neighborhood and the size of it? Our residents include longtime elderly African-Americans, most of who do not know about the new code, middle-income, newer, upscale, and those that are living in low-income housing, and we have a very good mix. Planning says they did not look at the density added by UT's East Campus Plan of 450 beds, 700 grad students that are at the west end of our three inner streets, and that'll be at least 2,100 people. And UT's land is zoned single-family. They're our west neighbor. Mainor Road and MLK Restaurants, coffee shops, UT softball, football, tennis, all park on our 26-foot wide streets. In terms- In terms of affordable housing, you're very familiar with the Blackland Community Development Corporation, which has 49 units and 12 that are in planning. We are committed to affordable housing. The new Mainor Road condos provided three to four, and perspective-wise, that's 64 units out of 250 homes. Our neighborhood plan has always called for development on the transit corridor, and we're in favor of ADUs. We have two new multifamily projects in the, in progress in the interior, one is entirely affordable. But between the density at UT and the corridors, adjustments should be made for our tiny neighborhood with one pocket park. There's no doubt that we need a new land code. I personally live across the street from four new homes that were built last year where one used to be, and I'm not opposed to density at all. Has anyone ever considered doing new design charrettes where the planners sit with the neighborhoods and find something workable for density rather than the broad strokes of this land development code? This code needs refining. We need more time to understand it. Like, I don't even know much at all about last night's changes. Please slow down the process and be context-sensitive about the scale and the density in Blackland neighborhood, but also in others caught between transit corridors. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Tuchek. Danielle Skidmore, and then Edward Kirk, and Al Coleman. AAU, it looks like.
Hi, my name is Danielle Skidmore. I'm a resident of District 9, and this is Peter. Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to provide public comments on the desperately needed update to our land development code. A lot has happened since I last stood before you back in April of 2018. Last November, our community passed the largest affordable housing bond in Austin history. And earlier this year, we took concrete steps towards achieving more affordable housing with affordability unlocked. I want to acknowledge my gratitude at the years of hard work that you, council, city staff, and the entire community have done on this enormous task of finally cleaning up a land development code, which since the 1984 zoning ordinance was enacted, has already been significantly amended dozens, no, hundreds of times. These code amendments try to address inefficiencies and inequities of the 1984 code with the needs of a city which has changed quite significantly in the past 35 years. I see this code rewrite as akin to cleaning out your garage. It starts organized with your garden supplies in one place, your sports equipment in another, tools in another. And over time, we buy new things, things break. We grab something to use and put it back in a different place. Eventually, you can't find anything, and you have to pull it all out and sort through it. We don't throw everything away. Perhaps the things that are just sitting there, broken, will be discarded. Otherwise, most of the items will go right back into the garage, but they'll be neatly labeled and organized so we can find them again. When we're putting everything back into the garage, we also have a chance to organize the space a little differently, to fit our family as it grows and changes. The point is, finally organizing your garage is a good thing. I know my time before you is limited, so I'll use my last minute or so to offer the following point. You've heard this from me many times before, but it bears repeating. Land use and transportation go hand in hand. If we are serious about substantive improvements to our public transportation system, we must address land use too. So as we look at Capital Metro's Project Connect and high-frequency transportation corridors, our land development code should absolutely allow for a stair-step of transition of multifamily density parallel to and within a quarter-mile of our corridors. More affordable and market-rate housing within walking and rolling distance to our transit corridors is quite probably the single most important thing we can do to help realize a more sustainable Austin. Thank you again for your time and for your service to Austin.
Thank you. Edward Kirk. Ann Coleman. Sean Garrettson. And then after Sean, Natalie Axe and Michael Whalen. Hey Sean, you have three minutes.
Okay. Good afternoon. Thank you very much for spending the time that you do and doing what you're doing. I've lived in District 1 in East Austin for about 20 years. I've served on the Environmental Board, the Urban Renewal Authority, Austin Revitalization Authority, been a board member of two different neighborhood associations, was a board member of Austin Community Design and Development Center, the Alley Flats Initiative, and I've been president of Chestnut Neighborhood Revitalization Corporation for about 15 years. All that's voluntary. I own my own urban planning company that works all over the country, helping communities improve their workforce, write comprehensive plans and write, and write land development code. At the beginning of most plans, I write a, I share a Greek proverb because it's hard to base decisions for the long term. But that is what you and the city council are charged to do. The quote is, "Societies grow great when men and women plant trees knowing they're never going to sit under the shade of those trees." We're making decisions for your children's children. I also was involved in Imagine Austin. And while not perfect, Imagine Austin, in my opinion, captured the sentiments of thousands of diverse perspectives from across the city. It's not perfect. Nobody got exactly what they wanted, but it was a good amalgamation of thousands and thousands of community input. The LDC is arguably the most important tool that cities use to implement comprehensive plans. By law, the zoning map needs to be representative of the, of the future land use map. Not many people know, but Chestnut Neighborhood Revitalization Corporation, we're in the process of submitting plans to the city for one of the first projects to be developed under Affordable Housing and Lock Ordinance. Right next to the two buildings we built that are three stories with two levels of 13 residential units and four small businesses at the bottom, this new building will be four stories, although we could go seven. It's going to have 46 units instead of what would have been 12. We are nearly quadrupling the size of the, of the number of affordable units because of the land development code. My opinion, many of the sentiments that you hear today about the affordability, they just simply don't know how this stuff is done. It's complicated, and the land development code, as it is written today, in my opinion, will generate more affordable housing. So let that set in. The, the, the ordinance allowed our nonprofit organization to quadruple the number of units from 12 to 46. I believe that is the main thing that you guys are trying to do with the LDC, one of the items. With a few minor tweaks, the, the land development code as written, in my opinion, is representative of Imagine Austin. Most notably, though, the items that I think need to be addressed. East Austin does not have a good north-south corridor. Airport Boulevard, Chestnut Avenue, or Pleasant Valley, or Chacon. I think this needs to be looked at because when you look 20 years down the road, we're going to have major bottlenecks over there, especially in between Airport Boulevard and I-35. And also, I don't think you need to slow down. Keep going, continue what you're doing. And, and lastly, I want to thank one of my, one of my close friends, Claire. Claire and I are actually on a project together in Lakeway. She invited me to come today, and I said, "Well, I don't know how long you guys think you're going to be." And she says, "Probably till 4 o'clock." It is 4:10. I'm sorry about that. But thank you again very much for your, for your participation.
Thank you, Sean. Natalie Axe. And Michael Whalen. And after Mr. Whalen, Janet Benke. Robert Burns, and Lily Murphy.
Thank you. Michael Whalen, on behalf of myself. I think there's broad agreement in Austin as to our values. We want things like quality parks, affordable homes, quality public transit, clean water, all of those things that we've worked on as a city. The tough conversations occur, and this is why I don't envy your position, when it comes to answering the question of how we accomplish all of this simultaneously, what's that optimal point where we have everything in balance? I think Imagine Austin can help answer that question, and I'll give you an example. Three of our most important values as a city are parkland, housing, and transit. We need all three, and we also need to make sure that we're able to accomplish all three in a way that balances our needs as a community. For instance, we have broad agreement that our corridors are our most important assets for directing growth, providing transit-supportive density and increasing our housing supply to absorb some of the market pressures facing our neighborhoods that might be in the transition zones. As a side note, areas with income-restricted affordable housing are more competitive for federal transit grants. I would also point out, staff just noted, that our transit corridors represent about 2%. The lots along the transit corridors represent about 2% of our city. And when I say corridors, I want to emphasize, I just mean the corridors, not the lots behind them, not the lots within a transition area or anything like that. Just the ones actually on the corridors. These are often complex infill projects where it is difficult to manage all of the competing demands made on them. And so when we take these corridor projects, and again, just the ones on the corridor itself, and we say, "Well, we want to maximize affordability in transit-supportive density, and also, we want 15% of the property for parkland," it doesn't always balance out. Instead, instead, you end up missing out on a lot of your goals. I've seen projects, several of them in the last six months, where the city has missed out on 50 units and five affordable units in one project, or completely missed out on entire, on an entire residential project on the corridor because of this tension. So I think the balance comes by doing the following. Number one, keeping a strong parkland dedication ordinance, as you have, because it is important to retain, to retain that value. And number two, to allow for properties that are on the corridor, again, that's just 2% of the city, and only for properties on the corridor, more flexibility in terms of the decision of whether to provide land or fee-in lieu, which, by the way, is consistent with the council direction to provide greater flexibility in our non-zoning regulations to allow for greater housing near and on transit corridors. Basically, you could allow the owner on a corridor property to decide whether to provide land or fee-in lieu for parkland. We're not skirting around the parkland dedication ordinance. You let the owner make that decision. And you could even allow staff to appeal the owner's decision within 30 days to the Planning Commission for a final decision. Again, this is just for the corridor properties where we've said we want to direct growth and increase housing. With one sentence, you could do more for housing and affordable housing on these corridors than anything else. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Janet Benke. Lily Murphy. Rebecca Steiner. Philip Wiley. Vincenzo Murphy. Laura Jennings. And Christopher Page.
A lot of the proposed new density for my neighborhood is unfeasible when excluded data is taken into account. For instance, topography, unlogged environmental features, indisposable public properties, and the like. Halloween came a little, little bit early for me when I woke up and looked at the remap. I live on Crest Avenue in East Austin. Almost every home on my street, including mine, has a slab foundation and sits on top of an extremely steep, alluvial bank, stabilized entirely by vegetation. To our immediate south is Oak Springs, a sleepy two-lane road with no construction over two stories. Like Crest, Oak Springs is also residential, a mix of old, single-family homes, new condo regimes, and a workshop slash residence that the owner lives at. Under the proposed LDC, Oak Springs gets labeled a transit corridor, which allows developers to build up to 90 feet with MU5A and a zero-foot setback from residential lots. The SF3s on Crest Avenue get upzoned to R4, even though it's impossible for us to build anything, you know, up to that scale because 60 to 70% of each of the parcels is covered by that same steep, alluvial slope, which is impossible to construct on. So we're getting stripped of residential compatibility given unusable entitlements for unbuildable density. Developers get to build up to 90 feet. It's going to stifle vegetation and destabilize the hill that our homes are built on. All this is happening in an area that's mapped as vulnerable to displacement by the UT uprooted study. Proposed zoning fails to take into account fixed limitations. For instance, logged and unlogged critical environmental features, springs and seeps at the base of the hill. Two large watershed properties essential to the Boggy Creek watershed. An elementary school that's not closing, a public library, and the prospect of slope collapse if the MU5A does go in at the base of the hill. They also ignore that if this new development materializes, it could displace about 20 families, many of whom are renters, including sub-60 and 80 MFI. At Planning Commission meeting on 10/22, Commissioner Yanis Spolito commented that when she talks about affordability to urban planners outside of Austin, and they hear that there's districts with some of the highest percentages of homeownership and lowest percentages of income, they tell her it's obvious that Austin needs preservation. And they think that that should coexist with whatever comes next. Through my personal experience, I've seen that the data underlying the LDC, and I know it was such a hard challenge for the LDC team to try to do this in such a short timeline with such a high goal. The underlying data, at least in my small circumstance of my own neighborhood, was so deeply out of sync that it could potentially destroy homes. Please avoid future planning that could cause disasters like the Shoal Creek slope collapse, which the city cannot afford. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Commissioners, believe it or not, that's the last speaker. Unless Andrew says otherwise. Sir, you're standing up.
I have a question. I had to see my, I watched my son earlier when my slot was called. I signed in at 9:30, but I missed it, so I just wanted to...
What number were you? Do you remember?
I was after the numbers.
So hang on a second. Commissioners, we're going to... I feel like I gotta make one quick comment. There was several speakers that addressed a supplemental report by staff. And it was in the context of, it was too last-minute. We haven't had a chance to review it. I just want to reemphasize that it was done by staff because there were comments that they heard from the citizens and from commissioners and others. And it was in response to that, and it was in response to errors that you found and clarifications and so on. So I feel like it was very helpful that staff did that. I just want to, I just want to put that out there. Going, sir, you are number 178. I'm really sorry. We had, we don't have an option to take speakers out of sequence. But I was going to mention that anyone that hasn't had a chance to speak, we have our next meeting on the 29th, and the 5th, and the 6th. And anyone that hasn't had a chance to speak already will have three minutes to speak on those days. And anyone that has already spoken today, you can have one minute to speak on those days. So I'm really sorry. I don't, I don't have a mechanism to, to undo that rule. No, we, we didn't go out of order. Okay. Any other comments? Andrew, can we take, take comments at all? No? All right. So those are all the speakers. Our next meeting is at 5:00 PM on October 29th, which is next Tuesday. We're going to take amendments from the working groups. And then the following meetings after that are on the 5th and the 6th at 5:00 PM. And then on the 12th, our regular meeting at 6:00 PM. 6:00 PM.
Can you remind us, work group amendments are due by when to who?
Working amendments, working group amendments are due to Jeff, sent to Andrew by 9:00 AM on Monday.
9:00 AM amendments?
Is that correct?
The working group.
Working group amendments.
Okay. Okay, our affordability working group has a call on Monday at 10:30 to discuss and finalize our amendments, so I don't think we'll have ours in by then. We probably need at least till end of day on Monday.
So one thing that some folks have discussed is that there might be some follow-up time on the 5th for doing like a second round or postponed working group amendments. So it may be good to go ahead and get in the ones that you can agree on for discussion on Monday, since we, since we really need to utilize our time, and if we start getting behind the clock, we're going to be screwed.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, 9:00 AM, we're not going to have any because we haven't even...
And that's okay. So here's, here's how I see this happening. I understand most of the working groups are going to be pressed for time, and that's okay. On the 29th, I expect to have some amendments to vote on by some working groups, if not all. And then if it's a short meeting, just know that we're going to talk on the 29th to have a longer meeting on the 5th. We might start earlier or go later. Okay, but we'll know more after we receive some amendments, and we might only be here for two hours. I don't know. But when we do have the amendments, those are all the amendments that we will have to discuss, and we'll then react accordingly on the 29th.
Chair, can I make a comment that I have not reviewed the staff report? I just went through it real briefly when it came out last night, and there may be some changes that some of the working groups may want to make based on the changes from the staff report. And that means that we have to review the staff report, and especially the transition zone is the one I'm thinking of, and adjust them accordingly. So I'm a little bit concerned about the timing on that.
Thank you for bringing that up. There are a couple of ways we can do this. We have the meeting scheduled on the 29th. We're going to meet, I would say, you know, if there are amendments that you're very confident about as a working group, let's, let's do those because we also had discussions about not revisiting topics that we've already voted on. And as we're getting new information, I feel like that is problematic to not be able to go back. And so let's focus on the amendments that we're absolutely sure about. I'm okay if it's a one-hour meeting on the 29th, as long as we can make progress and have a plan for the 5th and the 6th.
So Chair, I would, I would hope that we could see it as a different thing. If, if we put out amendments and then staff responds to those amendments, or makes corrections or reports where what we're amending is actually changed, I would think that our rules would allow us to go back and revisit some of those topics.
Sure. And I think that's part of it. The other part of it is just a time crunch. Any other comments? Commissioner Hempel?
Just that the downtown working group will be ready for Tuesday.
Okay.
Oh, good.
Great. Any others? Okay, so the meeting is adjourned at 4:20.
Chair, Commissioner Lays on it. If you can move motion?
Motion to close?
Close the public hearing.
Okay.
All those who say so.
And does that impact our future ones? No. Okay. Motion by Commissioner Flores, second by Commissioner Shea. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? All right. Now the meeting is adjourned at 4:22.